We call the 23 July meeting of the Manhattan City Commission to order. You all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a work session. We have two items, and the second item is both budget and then a look at our utility funds. Item number one, I ask Director Butler from the RCPD to come forward for a department update.
For some of you, you heard me talk a little bit about this yesterday, so I apologize for the repeat, but I know there's new listeners and commissioners that weren't at the intergovernmental luncheon yesterday. Just a few things that I'd like to share with you concerning recent activities. I think most of it is new information, some of it is an update. We had been planning for some time and we're almost ready to do it, have a sergeant that has come back from a federal task force be assigned to the north county, part of Riley County, to more directly supervise the four officers assigned up there. So that sergeant, Dustin Weesbrot, is back at the station. He's been going through a reintegration process with us because he's been on this task force for about three years. That should be completed probably the end of this week, and hopefully he'll be up there next week. We have been a member of the Pawnee Mental Health Task Force for many years and are in the process of establishing a crisis intervention team council as a subgroup of that. Oh, is my mic not on? Okay, I'll speak louder. You want me to stand over here? How's this? Is this better? Okay, I'll stand over here. So we are establishing a crisis intervention team. I can tell already it's better over here. And what this is designed to do is to help us collaborate more with our partners that deal with mental health issues, just like we do, just in their roles. And it's to help us close gaps, break down barriers, and also help us form a training opportunity later that is local, locally based, a 40-hour class on CIT training. The reason why that's important is because we have sent officers to crisis intervention training elsewhere. But often, and most likely, when those trainings are offered, it's offered based on what resources are available there, not here. And so while the officers learn a lot, they don't learn a lot about where they work. And so one of our goals is to form a 40-hour class here, have our local law enforcement, not just Riley County, but our neighbors, and also EMS dispatchers possibly, maybe even firefighters if they're interested in attending. And as part of this process, I have pledged the police department through the International Association of Chiefs of Police One Mind Campaign that we would accomplish certain things in the next 12 to 36 months. The department has been in good shape for a long time with their participation in the Pawnee Mental Health Task Force. By adding the CIT portion to it, and the local training, and committing to training a certain percentage of our officers, that's what the pledge is about. So I went on the website today, I signed up at the end of last week, and it doesn't list us yet, but you can go on the IACP website, it's iacp.org, if you put in the search box "One Mind Campaign," you'll go to a new page, and it'll tell you more about what the One Mind Campaign is about. It'll also list all of the states and all the departments in those states that have made the pledge. So if anybody listening would like to learn more, they can go there and see that. We believe that this will further improve our response, not only to people in mental health crisis, but improve our working relationship with those that help us in those efforts. I recently regurgitated the results of an employee survey to all of our employees about things that were on their mind. You know, as a new director, I wanted to find out what they thought about certain things in the department and how they provide service, what kind of support they felt like they had or needed. And so we had a great response from that, and we've put out a project list within the department, we're starting to form some internal working groups and committees to start working on these things. Actually, one of those things had to do with mental health services, so we've already checked one thing off the list already that we're working on. So we'll continue working on that, and as things progress, I'll prize you of some of those changes. Part of it's not just about what we can do for our employees, it's how we can assist them to do a better job for the community they serve, so that's part of the process as well. Just on an anecdotal note, last Saturday night, I did a walk-along in Aggieville with some of my officers from midnight to 3:00 a.m. You know, I've heard a lot of different opinions about different parts of our community, and Aggieville is included in that. So I think it's important in my role, and I've done this touring the county. You've heard me talk about me taking a day and touring the county, just to lay eyes on things that I hear about, but having no frame of reference, and so that's why I spent some time down in Aggieville. Now, I know that the students are not back yet, and that was pointed out to me because it was a rather quiet Saturday night, so I committed to going back after school is back in session to see it again and see the kind of challenges we have down there. One thing that is also important to note is Aggieville's an important, integral part of our community, and I'm committed to us providing good services down there so it can be safe for anybody, whether they are a regular patron or somebody who's just going in there for the first time. Also, sometimes there's things that go on in Aggieville that affect the neighborhoods, and so we're monitoring that, I'm trying to assess how that works as well. Recently, we've been starting to get some noise complaints from the neighboring citizens about the music coming out of Aggieville at night, so that's something we'll be taking a look at as well. But the main point is, I'm continuing to spend time outside of the police department learning the community that I'm new to. We are in the final stages, we have some interviews scheduled soon to hire the grant-funded victim advocate that you may have heard about, is a victim advocate coordinator that will work in the police department, not to replace any existing community services, but to help us better coordinate services and referring victims to the services that they need in the community. Sometimes, it just works out this way that there's gaps or there's delays. The victim advocate coordinator will help close those gaps for victims that we're working with who've been victimized in serious crimes. It also allows the detectives to spend more time focused, more energy on the actual investigation of the case, instead of helping victims navigate sometimes complex and intimidating processes. You probably heard that the county signed a contract to purchase land to relocate the range, so we, I think that was early last week that the contract was signed. We've already met with county planning, and we're starting to move forward on what that site will look like, where things will be located, and how it will be used. So it's really early in the process, but I want you to know, we know the lease for that land that we're on now expires, I think, in June next year, so we have less than a year to get this done and get off the property that we're on now, so we're working on that. The last thing that I'll mention, and then I'll stand for any questions that you have. Yesterday at the intergovernmental luncheon, I mentioned the mill impact of the approved 2020 RCPD budget. I think I was a little low on the city mill levy because I forgot to include, if it is finally approved, the RCPD delinquency rate that I think was removed from the calculations. So I think the decrease in the mill levy for 2020 from the city's portion is a little over .6 mills. Now, for your listeners, that doesn't mean that we requested less funding, we actually requested more funding, I don't want to mislead anyone, but the valuation of property increased in 2020 over 2019, so the mill impact for taxpayers was a little over a half of a mill less than what we had this year. And for the county, there was a mill increase of .03, so overall, the mill impact between the two main funding sources for the police department, that we saw a reduction of about half a mill. One thing to keep in mind, and I don't have all the facts and figures on this, the county by statute is also obligated to pay for facilities, maintenance of facilities. In this case, you just heard me talk about the range, that's not included in the mill impact. They use a variety of funding sources, I think, for those things, I just don't have a good handle on what it is. If you ever want details on that, you might want to talk to the county and ask them specifically how that is broken out. So that's all I have that I brought prepared to talk about, but if you have any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer those.
Yeah, thanks once again for coming and giving us these updates. I think it gives us a chance to not only know what's going on, but like you said, give you some questions for us to, for you to answer. First of all, I think we're getting closer and closer to having some kind of a comprehensive plan as far as the mental health needs in our community and the partnerships with, whether it's Pawnee, or RCPD, or the county, or even our hospitals. Each time I listen to you, there's always a different level, another step that's added, but not taking away something else, but we're building it, and I think that that's in the best interest of our community. So I like where we're going with that. One of my questions is, tonight we're going to be discussing fees and raising fees as part of kind of a revenue source, but some fees that haven't been increased in a while and things like that. And the municipal court is on this, so I should have emailed you earlier, so I don't want to catch you off guard. But one of the things we're looking at, for example, is having, reviewing existing fees for, well, we don't require a fee for indigent, am I saying this right? Indigent defendant to pay any portion of the public defender, for a public defender, and now we are considering having them reimburse the city, the convicted defendant reimburse the city. And I feel that kind of works negatively towards the defendant, oftentimes they're the ones that have few or no means, and that's why they have a public defender, and how would they go about reimbursing something like that? What are your thoughts on that as we, because I think you're the expert in this field, and I don't have any other information to base it on, as far as what does that look like for fees? So I get, I'm concerned about something like that.
Well, generally, I always like to preface any comment or response I give about municipal court and revenue with this. The police department, when they take any enforcement action, whether it's writing a citation or arresting someone, there is never a consideration of how much revenue will this generate for the city or any governing body. That's just not part of the equation. I don't ever want citizens to think that's part of the equation. The idea is to hold people accountable who have committed a crime and someone's reported it, or an officer observed something that they consider to be unsafe and they take an enforcement action. So that is our posture when it comes to enforcement. In terms of fees and fines that are set by the court, my experience, and so I hate to tell you this, I'm not an expert, but my experience while I've been in Kansas is those are always set by the municipal court judge or the municipal court staff and the judge, and they're the ones that make those decisions. Rarely have I ever been asked what I think, other than, you know, if, for example, and this is a real example, when I was in Ottawa, the city had decided to set seatbelt violation fees at $10, and that was not in line with what the state had set. And later on, the state changed and said, "This is what you have to levy, and here's why." We had a gentleman who lived in rural Ottawa who would drive into town on a regular basis, and he didn't wear a seatbelt. The officers got to know him because they knew his car and they knew he didn't wear a seatbelt. And he said, "I'm not going to wear my seatbelt because I don't like wearing it, and $10 is no big deal." Well, once the state said, "You can't levy a lower fine, Ottawa, you've got to make it $60," suddenly he started wearing his seatbelt all the time, instead of being subjected to that $60 fine. I'm not advocating for one fine or another, my point is, to change behavior, it has to have an impact on the person that is being subjected to the fine, the consequence, the accountability, whatever. So as far as your question goes about indigent defendants, there is case law about people who are in jeopardy of incarceration being entitled to an adequate defense, and that has been interpreted a lot of different ways throughout the years, but one of the ways that is addressed by most communities is they ensure that if somebody does not have the means to hire an attorney, that one will be appointed anyway, and that cost is either absorbed or subsidized by the community. I actually sat in municipal court here about three weeks ago, a month, sat in there for a morning, just to watch the proceedings, to help educate myself. And there's a form that they fill out if they claim that they cannot afford an attorney, and that's evaluated by the prosecutor and the judge, and then they make a determination whether or not the defendant is entitled to free counsel or subsidized counsel. The details of that process I'm unfamiliar with, the criteria that they use, I'm unfamiliar with, but I've given kind of a long-winded answer, but that's the best I can offer.
I think I understand what you're saying. I think my, I mean, we're going to go into a deeper discussion later this evening. I think one of my concerns is, oftentimes we attribute, when we see the criminal numbers that are incarcerated or need services, it's not because their crime is heavier than somebody else that's of a Caucasian race, let's say, but just that they can't pay the fees, or they can't pay the bail, or they can't pay something. It's not because they're worse criminals, it's because they can't meet the needs financially, therefore they're in jail or kept longer, whatever it is. So that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, there's definitely, and I don't have the research to cite, but there's definitely research that shows, once somebody enters the criminal justice system, they're more likely to stay in it. And a lot of it has to do with the financial burden of being held accountable for certain things that they've been convicted of. That's true, so I know that there are many efforts across the country, and even nationally. I know our current presidential administration signed a bill not too long ago that has reduced prison sentences for certain categories of offenses and released people earlier than planned. Part of that is to, is part of the notion of, you've got to give people a second chance, you can't just put them in jail and throw away the key. So locally, I think that you, the Kansas Supreme Court has done something similar when it comes to bond. We received a memo from the municipal court about two months ago, saying that for the most part misdemeanor arrests would now, or arrestees would now be released on a recognizance, a personal recognizance bond, which means if we didn't have any information to indicate they'd failed to appear for court, they had to be released on their own recognizance, and if they failed to appear later, then the bond that normally would have been required would be imposed then, which then, of course, starts that cycle that I just mentioned a second ago.
Makes sense, thank you.
You're welcome.
Looks like that's it. Thanks very much.
You all have a good evening. Thank you.
Yeah. We'll now move to item two, which is discussion of the budget, and specifically, that will follow with water and wastewater. So Bernie, you've got an introduction.
Just briefly, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to take you through a very brief PowerPoint slide. We've been, we've been through this now for, seems like months, well, it has been months, and I think we're just about close to wrapping it up. We're going to be asking you to agree with the budget publication that you have in front of you, but just to give you a little bit of a summary on what we're looking at. If you go back to the first work session, we presented a budget, and management thought this was a good idea because we, we knew that we were over the tax limit, if you recall that, and, but it also shows the needs, I think, of the city, if all those needs were to be put into play and budgeted accordingly. As you notice, we worked the thing down from the second to the third to the fourth, and now, at this work session, we're looking at about a little less than half a mill increase over this year's mill levy. If you look at the budgets, and you're, by the way, you're, if you're following along with your PowerPoint that was sent to you yesterday, this slide has changed a little bit. My friend, Rob, would tell you that I get stymied on very simple things, and this was one of those. I had the wrong years in these various budgets, but I wanted to show you how the increase that we're asking for here is probably less than in past years, and understandably so. So it gives you a little bit of a perspective on what those increases have been year over year. If you look at the new improvements, and I want you to see this slide, really, because 2020, the new improvements, and those are improvements that have never been taxed before in our community, so this is new to the property tax rules. The increase compared to past budget years is really small. Now, you notice it's been small here, albeit the last three budget years, and I know that our city manager can recall a time, as well as many others here in this room, when our increase in new improvements ended up being 20%, 30% of the tax, of the tax increase itself. And that was when we were experiencing that kind of a boom period before the recession in 2008. If you look at our, what we're recommending as a mill levy and the impact, you have this amount from new improvements, the 267,000, about a third of the property tax increase. We have 252,000 from market changes. Now, those are changes in individual taxpayers' real estate. If you recall, our total increase in valuation was about 1.8%, but if you also remember, and I think some of you have been on the commission in your earlier times, when we looked at the valuation increases, and we know that a third will see an increase in their tax, their personal taxes, a third will see no change, and a third have actually seen a decrease. And that just seems to hold true as we've tested these valuations. The actual increase then, for what we call the true mill levy increase, is about $238,000. Now, granted, the total property tax increase is 750,000, but I wanted you to see how those were broke, how they were broken out as a result of those increases. I put in front of your desk, or on your dais tonight, the full example of this, and to me, this is really important. It's something that shows, if a home, a $200,000 home, increased by 1.8% to a little less than 203,000, this is what the tax increase and the tax structure would look like. Now, I have to tell you, both the county and the school district are estimated taxes, but these are close, based on the mill levies that they've indicated that they'll probably publish. What, of course, I want you to notice is the top two, and that's the city. Both what we call those inside-city taxes from those things that are completely under the control of the city commission and the advice of your city manager, and those from the outside, which includes the library and RCPD, and you'll see that those taxes, and I think Dennis mentioned that just a moment ago, have come down.
Hey Bernie, I don't know if I'm just crazy and I'm on the wrong page on my handout, but our handout, it says increase from city taxes is $3, and that's negative two.
Yeah, that's another one of those small little changes.
So that's the right one, right?
This is the right one.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I go back to Rob.
It's okay, it's okay.
It's a little thing. See, this came about yesterday in a meeting, and he chided me for not understanding some simple numbers, so I went back to the PowerPoint, and indeed, there were a couple of small changes.
As long as yours is the truth.
Yes, it's the truth, Commissioner, yes. So, if we had the 1.8% increase in valuation, this is what the tax structure would look like, estimated. If you go to no increase in value, it changes rather dramatically, and especially from the outside city taxes. So the total increase of what we're suggesting is less than a half a mill, amounts to about 75 cents a month over the course of a year, based on city taxes for 2020. If I can step you back, I want to make a point. You notice on this 1.8% increase in valuation, clear down there, it says the increase from market value change on taxable property, that's at $39. And again, this is important because a lot of taxpayers just make the presumption that, first of all, any increase, any increase in taxes is your fault, from the city manager to the city commission. Well, that's obviously not true, because we have the county, we have the school district, but it's also important to understand that changes in valuation, whether you're with that third that goes up, or a third that stays the same, or a third that might go down, will dictate what kind of a breakout this happens from these mill levy changes. We have some personnel requests that continue, and there's been a change here, and that changes at the bottom of this slide, a second human resource technician, and that'll come entirely out of the general fund. Now, that's a change, Commissioners, from what we showed you at the fourth work session. But the reason this change is being encouraged to be adopted, and I'll speak for the city manager or for our human resource director, Tammy Gilman, is the requirements that are being placed more and more on the human resource arena. And I can tell you that Tammy, as our new HR director, I think has done a yeoman's job already in, in looking at all of these criteria, these requirements, and things that we really need to get our arms around. And her request for two individuals in the HR department, I think frankly is warranted, and I think the work is clearly there. The second part of our personnel request, now we have seven, come from those that you have seen before, and you'll notice that both the previous slide and this slide show that those personnel requests are supported in different ways. All of these, as the city manager would tell you, either have a revenue component to them or are offset by decreases in expenses that we really believe these positions will provide. Economic Development Fund, again, you've seen this before, but you'll notice clear on the right-hand side, at the lower right-hand, all the changes that we've made to lower that mill levy to less than half a mill, a lot of that comes from utility revenues that are being transferred either to the bond and interest fund, or in the case of Adabas, moved back into economic development. So that program money that you're looking at, roughly 6 million, will be decreased by roughly 697,000 for 2020. Frankly, I don't think that'll have that much of an impact in the Economic Development Fund, but I did want you to be aware of that. So our city budget fund, sorry?
What's the, what's the general plan to do MedaFab in Riley County to zero?
So on the MedaFab, that's really our only balance of funds that we have that we can utilize inside the city in Potawatomi County. So we've been holding that there for opportunities that will develop. We've had some in the past, we anticipate, obviously, with the 24 corridor plan, that there'll be additional opportunities to, to be able to make investments from that fund. On the RICO, that's where the sale for the KSUIC building will continue to be credited to that fund. So I don't think we have a specific obligation that comes out of that particular fund from that balance now, but the rules for the two funds are a little bit different from that aspect.
So can we, let's say, KSUIC begins to pay off here, so we, can we obligate or, yeah, obligate monies from RICO against future projects, just like we do from EcoDevo? obligate monies from RICO against future projects, just like we do from EcoDevo?
We could, you know, and I think that would be something we would kind of tackle in our annual budgeting process, or as we get requests, determining which fund you thought might be appropriate, or potentially even both funds could be utilized for that.
So as a summary, the increase on our tax base scores less than 2%, 1.8%. If you look at the annual revenues, so with the last five years, and we know we've had a slowdown, average about 187,000 a year in growing revenues. In this budget for 2020, we have a planned cost of living still at 1.6, step plan at 2.0, and of course, a new equipment reserve fund that, again, would be funded from utilities. And we're looking at a lease program, a master lease program, that would basically take that equipment reserve fund and parcel it out in payments, roughly 100,000 a year for the five-year program with that master lease. We have seven new positions now within the general fund. And again, all seven are either revenue neutral or have reduced cost, expenditure cost associated with those. And last, and probably, well, not quite last, and very important, is our 2020 city budget of about 156 million, and an amended budget for the special street and highway fund. And you have not seen that before, and that may come as a little bit of a surprise. We amend budgets on occasion. And in this particular case, I think if I recall, and Brian Johnson, our city engineer, or Rob Bot are here, that Schilling had a project, a street project, that I don't think was finished. We carried a lot of money forward, and that project, I believe, is going to be finished this year. So that, we'll be exceeding that to what we did in 2019 as a budget, because that project last year wasn't completed, money's carried forward. So we're asking for amendment for the special street and highway. We may also, I had just a real quick conversation with Brian Johnson, we may also be publishing a special, for the street maintenance program, the special street maintenance fund, a little bit higher amount. There's a bid that's going to be held on August 6th, is that right, Brian? The night of our public hearing, and that won't have enough time to meet publication. We could wait for the bid and then publish another budget for our second reading. It's awkward what we'd like to do, and I'll get with both Rob and Brian tomorrow. We may just go ahead and publish an amendment to the special street maintenance fund as well.
And those are all positive things. I mean, that's us managing actual contract amounts, change orders. You know, when we got the sales tax passed for the streets, we promised not to have to ever borrow against that. So we're trying to keep pushing out as much work as possible to keep repairing the streets. You all drive the streets every day, you know what's out there. So again, this is just us trying to keep track with what revenues are coming in, so...
And finally, yes.
Bernie?
Yes.
Kind of a statement, and hopefully it will be addressed throughout the night. I don't need an answer right now, but I'm a little bit of a nerd, so I listen to podcasts every day. Today, I was listening to our podcast, it reminded me a lot of this budget situation, how I wish it would have gone. So it was about any time the United States takes action against a foreign enemy, the generals come in the room and present the president these strike plans. And they're, they show the amount of risk, the target, and essentially, it was usually illustrated in a small, medium, large plan. And then the president can make the decision on which is the best route to go. And that's honestly how I really wish this budget went. Five sessions in, I still don't know what zero looks like. And because I don't know what zero looks like, you haven't convinced me that a zero increase is worse than where we are right now. Hopefully, I get to hear a little bit more about it through the rest of the night, but as it stands right now, because I, again, I don't know what zero looks like, I wouldn't support this mill increase. I need to know what the consequences are of us not raising the mills. Right now, I don't, I don't fully understand that. What would those cuts look like? Because I don't, I think that's important for me to know, but it's also important for the community to know if we're going to raise their taxes.
You know, Commissioner, I understand, I know exactly what you're saying. I think part of the dilemma of giving you a clear-cut answer is that there's so many different variations with a $155 million budget, that you can make those kind of changes to go with the direction that the commission might want. We know that less than half a mil, that .4 mils, we know that that's worth about 250,000, 260, right around there. We know that. And so if you're looking at getting down to zero, you can go ahead and decide, at least in part, by the information that, really, a lot of information that we've given you over the last five work sessions, where that might be done. Now, again, I think it's up to your city manager, that's what he's hired to do. And the city manager comes back to department heads and says, what are all the options? And they are immense. There's all sorts of options.
And I guess that's what I'm asking to do, because we have a city manager from our government. So there's significant portions of the budget and contractual costs and commodities that I have little to no idea where they're actually going. And so it's hard for me to look at a budget and say, yep, we could reduce that contractual cost there, because I really don't understand what it is or where it's going to. So that's, that's exactly what I'm asking the city manager to do, is to come back and tell us what zero looks like. And if zero true, if this is better than zero, then I'll happily vote for a tax increase. But right now, I just don't know that. I'm just trusting in that process. So I don't mean to get into the weeds, and I don't want to go on and on about it. But I just, I just wish, like we had been asking for from the beginning, there is a, I want to trust the city manager's direction, here are the four or five approaches that we could go towards, and then I can vote on one of those options.
Yeah, me as well. Follow on on that, because, you know, my thoughts have always been that we're going to have an increased city budget because of the assessments. I mean, that's clear in the slides. So we're going to spend more money. But, but there's no reason why we can't achieve a zero mil, a flat mil. More so because we've got this November sales tax initiative, which, which I think we've got to send the message that, folks, we, we want you to support the sales tax initiative, and that's why we're not going to raise your mill levy. And I think we've done a pretty good job in the work sessions of hitting some specifics that we've suggested and moved money around, and we've got it down to, you know, the .4. And, you know, I could go through this thing and, and point out cut XYZ. I don't want to do that. I think the city manager could just flat say, okay, we got this much left, and do a percentage across the board. I think there's enough waste there, if each and every department looks at it, you know, from, from, you know, multiple mailouts that I mentioned last week on backflow. You know, I got four of them this year so far. I mean, there's things there that can be cut, and I think we can shave that out of there. And then, and I get it, the personnel, if you look at the things that went up and went down, it's personnel costs and things of that nature. And that's why the sales tax, I think, is so important, that we get that moved in there. But I probably won't support the budget, and that probably won't surprise you, I haven't the past four years, because I think we need to keep our budget within the increases that we get from increased assessments and from new building. And that was the whole purpose, the intent of the tax lid, that all local governments fight. The reason they put that in, and I know the way they did it maybe didn't quite achieve what they wanted, but the intent was to force local government to stay within those parameters so that mill levies didn't exceed, you know, what happened in normal assessments and marketplace. So I'm probably not going to support this unless somebody can convince me that we can't chop a little bit more out of here.
I don't think I have to discuss about all the changes we're going to see as far as the fees and things. I don't think any of us signed on to raise taxes, and I want to continue to say that, that the sales tax that we're looking at for November is very different from the tax we're looking at tonight. They have different revenue sources, and they have different areas that they're going to be expended on. As our community grows, I think since the day I came on, at least in 2013, I think, the budget was something around 136 million, and it's grown since then for a lot of reasons. Not only for costs of every, all the operations that we have to maintain, but also because of staff. Last year, we saw where we can cut some staff, and I think we made some drastic cuts last year, and we felt the impact in the community. But if we're going to continue to grow, I think this is something that, after whittling it down a little bit, is something we can work with. I'm not happy with it, but I think it's something we can work with and see where else we can collect other types of revenue. Because if this is the pattern we're going to go down, and if we're going to be one of those thriving communities that hasn't felt the negative impacts, it's because we are doing something right. And we are not in a position to get complacent right now and think, we don't have to do anything this year and everything's going to be fine next year. That's not how life works. So we need to continue to move forward and build up our staff so they don't go off to other places that are more competitive, use this as their training base, and move on to other areas. We need to keep everything not only average, but above average in some instances. So let's have some more of those discussions and see what we need to do to grow the community and hopefully collect more of that revenue, because that's why we're investing back into the community. So I look forward to having a few more of those discussions during this, during this session itself.
I have one more slide to show you, and that speaks, I think, to Commissioner McKee's options that he wants to see. But I would like to make a point before I move away from this slide. Remember, that 156 million, which goes up every year, if you go back and look at the reserve funds that we have, that's adding to that number, because we budget those reserve funds as part of this whole process. So I wanted you to be aware of that, because, you know, you have the recreation and trails, and you've got the street maintenance fund, and you've got a liability reserve fund, risk management fund, all sorts of things that are adding to the growth of that budget that have nothing to do with operations or spending money in a ill-advised manner. The last slide I want to show you, and again, Commissioners, apologize, you don't have this here, but your appetite, we need to know if you'd like us to move forward on these general fund revenues. We've identified, and you have in front of you a memo from me, that says about 75,000 has been identified that we could put to the general fund in 2020, 24,000 in Sunset Zoo. And so I think that increasing these fees, and perhaps some others to follow at a later date, is something that we need to know if you have a concurrence and an agreement that you would like to do. And with that, I'll stand for questions as well as city staff and city management.
Maybe just a couple of things. When we started, you know, we had asked for this methodology. That's kind of water over the dam now, but, you know, for what's it look like at zero, what's it look like at .5, and so on. And then it gives you kind of a prioritized cut list. In other words, you, what happens if we did this, what happens if you did that? And I think one of the things we saw early on is that the cost to personnel is the thing that's really pushing us every year. In other words, a 1.6 COLA and a 2.0 step automatically, at least in current growth rate, automatically spends more than we have as a result of valuation increase in property tax. It's just the numbers. So then we argued a little bit and said, well, do we think we can hold down the COLAs, hold down the step increases? What happens to the people that we've hired, whether it's in the fire department, the city, the police department, USD, what is the impact of that? We were a little worried about it. Then we decided, well, we've also got to have a reserve fund that's credible, that means it's credible to us, and it's also more credible than it was to our people that hold our bonds or sell our bonds. So the .4 is, as opposed to zero, is not very good. But if you look at where we started, and the, the absence of almost any funds in the CIP, it's probably about as good as we can do. So again, the methodology that I would have hoped for is different, but I think the .4 is pretty good, given where we started out, and what all the department heads came in with is what they, what they thought they would need. So we've got some real challenges ahead of us regardless. The other thing I'd say is that, as a taxpayer looks at his property tax, he's going to see probably 11 mil increase. So the city contributes .4, the county 3.4 or something, and then the school district 7.8, maybe a little less than that, depending on how the bonds work out. So, I mean, the county is going to be impacted, there's no question about that. So that, that really hurts, you know, if we wanted to go in clean with a, asking for this .3 sales tax, we would just assume everybody'd be at zero. But we're not going to achieve that. I mean, that's just, we're, even our little contribution is a drop in the bucket here with the, with the other increases. So we've got, again, I think we're about where we, as low as we can go.
And even if we're at zero, we get the blame anyway for the other two.
That's exactly right.
I'm interested in hearing the rest of the presentations this evening, before we get to our conclusions.
Well...
Is this all there is? Are you all there is?
No. I'm in. I get to sit down at this point.
We're going to hear from Randy.
So do you, on these fees though, do you want to hear about our opinion on these now or after the stormwater and wastewater?
So either way, I mean, we can, we can wait and review them a little bit more in detail after the, the water rates, but if you'd like to jump into that, we can, we can do that as well to provide some, you know, it's not necessarily something that I would recommend we make a decision on publication. I mean, that's really what we need for tonight. You know, do we publish with a .4, knowing you can always go down, and we can provide additional detail specifically on how you might lower that more if you implement these fees. You know, at this stage of the, of the year, we're, we're kind of holding our own on sales tax revenue. We haven't seen the big decrease, but at the same time, it's pretty flat. So it's a little bit better than last year, but, but not much. And then the last, half of last year is when things tailed off significantly. So I would suggest that, you know, some of the fees that Bernie showed you aren't really going to accomplish a lot from an overall perspective. It might give us a little bit of cushion, you know, as opposed to deciding whether you're going to implement those to go to a zero-mil levy or whatever the case may be.
Mayor, how would you, do you want us to wait to give our opinion on the fees?
Well, you may get, you know, a little bit of either positive or negative idea from water, so we might as well just listen to that and then come back.
Well, I'll give way then to Randy DeWitt, who is Assistant Director of Public Works.
Well, I don't, I don't know what fees you guys are going to discuss. I don't, I don't know if what I'm going to talk about has anything to do with that, but I'll, I'll try to make it better for you one way or another. So let's go ahead and dive right into this. We're about a year and a half into our new rate and rate structures that were implemented through the cost of services study. Last time I presented this to you in December, overall, the story is, is, the details of the story have changed, but generally, the story is still the same. So on the water, water side, generally, we're meeting expectations for the most part in terms of our revenues and our fund balances. Some things have changed on the expenses side, but on the wastewater side in general, still coming in below the expectations of what we expected out of that study. So for, for a reminder, you know, 2019 was the second year, and 2020 was going to be the third year of a three-year phase in of, of the new rate structure. And so for 2019... And so for 2019, 2020, both of those years, we were recommending to do a 5% increase to both funds. The other thing I wanted to talk about that I promised in December was that, at the time, we hadn't implemented any of the facility plan CIP projects into the fund balances. So we've been working and all those are now in the fund balances, in the forecast and the CIP. I will note that most of those large projects come after 2025. And so I mentioned 2025 because, as we've talked about before, that ten-year window that we did to model the cost of services study had an end goal of 2025. So before I get into the finer details of the water and wastewater fund, just looking at some big picture items of what's impacting the funds. So of course, on the water side, we've gone through about a 12-month period where we've been particularly wet. So it has impacted the water revenues. In 2018, we're about $360,000 shy of what we were projecting for revenues. So point of that being that we started 2019 with a little bit lower fund balance than we had anticipated. And then of course, 2019 year-to-date, we all know it's been a particularly wet year. So at the end of June, we had brought in about 37% of our anticipated revenues for the year. Typically, at that point, we'd have brought in about 42% to 45% of our revenues. So we always rely on July and August and September to kind of bring us back up to where we're supposed to be. But through the end of June, we're about $376,000 short on revenues where we would have thought we would have been. So what that means is whatever we were anticipating for the beginning fund balance for 2020, probably going to be a little bit lower than what we had liked. Things can change, as we know. We could have a very hot August and I don't think we're going to make that up, but more than likely, we're not going to see those revenues that we thought we were going to get in 2019. And that's okay because the water fund's in pretty good shape. So on the wastewater, the first bullet point there, another thing we need to talk about just in general, is the amount that we're transferring to the general fund on an annual basis is going up. These are, of course, funds that we transfer annually that are split equally between the three enterprise funds and they go to support services that are provided and utilities by general fund. Ron and Bernie can give a lot more detail about what goes into that. In general, on the water fund, the 2020 general fund transfer is projected to be about $381,000 more than it was in 2018. And over on the wastewater side, same story with the general fund transfer. It's a little bit different amount, but in 2020, the general fund transfer is going to be $338,000 more than what it was in 2018. Second bullet point there, something we've talked about probably the last three or four times I've been up here to talk to you guys about the status of the wastewater fund. And that's just the general decline in the winter quarter average, which is primary fact, the primary thing that we use to project revenues for the sewer side. It represents the revenue for about 85% of our customer base. So generally, over the past five years, we've seen an average of 2.6% decline in the winter quarter average every year. Last year, from 28 to 2019, we had a decrease of about 2.3%. And so one major difference that you're going to see in some of the fund balances for the wastewater is that up until December of last year, we had really been projecting usage to stay relatively flat or go up with growth. And twenty, well, after this year, made a change in the way we project revenues for the sewer, for the wastewater fund. And that's, we're going to have to start projecting a negative, a decrease every year for residential consumption.
So talk to me about that. Why is it, why is it that it's declining? Are people using less water? Is it because of rain? Is it there are fewer? You said the residents, we have, the residents are increasing, but the usage is decreasing.
I've talked to other municipalities, my counterparts in other cities. It's not uncommon. We can't pinpoint the exact cause for it, but I think part of it is they consciously know that if they conserve water in the wintertime, they'll have a lower water bill or sewer bill throughout the year. I think the main impact is because of high-efficiency water appliances, new plumbing codes, high-efficiency Generally, Lawrence does the same thing. They've started projecting a decline in their consumption, even though they're seeing three to five percent growth every year. Topeka's the same way. So it's not just us, it's just something that's trending. And there's nothing wrong with it. It's great.
Right.
And I think that's, you know, the point of, you know, water conservation and the appliances and plumbing fixtures is that we have to find a way to deal with it.
And that's what I want to be careful with because people are trying to make a deliberate decision in their usage, thinking it's going to reduce their bills at the same time. And if we're going to increase it, I feel like we're penalizing them for doing the right thing.
And I understand that. And like I said, I'm all for water conservation. I guess, and we'll get into this later, but the bottom line is, the costs that we're incurring to operate, the utility services aren't going down. We have, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars in infrastructure we have to maintain. And if we don't maintain it, they fail and our system fails. So, I mean, as a customer, I completely understand it. I follow the same suit. I know that if I save in the wintertime, I'm going to pay less on my bill throughout the year. And it's something that I have to consider, but in reality, my task is to make sure that we're generating enough revenues to offset our expenses and that we're providing an adequate reserve level to ensure the integrity of the fund.
Yeah, I don't know if we can look at some other efficiencies in the way we do the operations, if they're putting in appliances and such to decrease their water usage, if we have something like that at a higher level where we can work along with them to keep their bills low because that was one of the reasons they bought it, not just to be environmentally safe, but also to reduce their bills. So I don't know what that looks like as far as future efficiencies and future products or how those infrastructures are built.
I mean, I have some general opinions on, you know, our utility versus what I pay for my water and wastewater and what I'm willing to pay for other things like my phone bill, my cable, my internet and those kind of things. And, you know, I guess it is what it is. Like I said, I can document here that I am being proactive with trying to find savings to help the situation. In 2019, you know, I found about $600,000 in savings by reducing the budget by deferring projects or eliminating projects or finding project savings. And in 2020, I've got about $300,000 that I've marked for savings. So I'm actively looking for those things that I can help offset this. But I guess, like I said, bullet point number one and a slide I'm going to show you here in a second, is there are other costs that we're incurring that we don't, we've always incurred them in the past, but now there's going to be more. So there's many other factors that go into this.
Right.
So it's not, it's not just the sewer side, it's.
No, I understand the big picture of it. I just, I'm not comfortable with it.
Yep, I understand completely.
I'm still struggling with, over this period we're looking at with your line chart, we're looking at 12% reduction, you know, over that time period. I'm trying to figure out, in the terms of homeowner, what that means. I mean, is that all turning off your water quicker? Is it high-efficiency showers? Where else do you use water? You know, the washing machine?
Well, I mean, I know personally, I made the switch from an older-style clothes washer and an older-style dishwasher to high-efficiency appliances. It makes a big difference. I think in general, they, you know, they reduce water consumption by 50 to 75%.
Well, when we look forward then, you know, I mean, we have to maintain what we have, there's no question about that. But when we look forward on some of those projects on the water side, does that mean that some of those production increases that we might have planned in the future won't
I think that's something to consider, particularly on the water side. We've done a good job of expanding our wastewater facilities to where we've got a good capacity. Most projects that we have on the wastewater side are geared towards updating what we have, purchasing new, or purchasing leased lands on the Biosolids Farm, purchasing additional lands because we're already constrained by the amount of property that we have to apply to. And then, you know, updating significant systems at the wastewater plant that are, you know, originally in 1974. So, I mean, I can go on and on about that. Generally, I think that is the case on the water side because as we grow, we need more water, as the demands for water increase, that's really impacting us on how we have to grow our systems, our infrastructure.
I mean, you have to multiply the number of users times the average rate. So whether or not the total number of gallons is going down, I don't know. I didn't do the math, so.
You know, the residences, the residential customer, like I said, they make up 80% of our customer base, but that other 20% is the higher, the higher usage customers, K-State, you know, they're across the board. They go up and down and up and down. And the commercial sector, the industrial sector, you know, you don't know from year to year how that's going to change. Generally, they're slightly going down too, but last year, K-State went up. So I got to really speak towards the majority of our customers and that's the residential customers.
Randy, how do you count the links? The apartment, big apartment complex out on Marla, do you count by one big water meter for the entire complex? Do you count a water meter for each building? I know you don't count individual water meters for each apartment.
So a multi-family complex like that, they're residential, but as far as the billing goes, they're commercial. So they have individual meters. In that particular instance, they have individual meters. They don't have a master meter. They'll have a meter for every building.
Building, yeah.
And so they have separate meters for irrigation, so that's what allows us to treat them. You know, we don't have to use the winter quarter average for them. So they essentially, it's what they use on the water is what they pay for on the sewer too.
And the mobile home courts have one connection.
Typically, yeah. Master meter.
And all 100 mobile homes in that court are metered off that one.
Yeah, they're essentially paying as one commercial entity.
One entity.
Just one other, I guess, point in this discussion about, and I think the mayor was hinting, and Usha too, in terms of capital improvement projects, fund balances, growth of the community. One thing I sat down with Ron and Jason recently was my concern about that balancing act between these fund balances and me not having to look and tell Eric, "I'm sorry, you can't approve that subdivision because our infrastructure is behind." It's a balancing act of being able to provide, whether it's delivery of water or the collection of sanitary sewer. And there are examples in Kansas where folks told subdivisions, "And I'm sorry, no development. We can't handle it. Our infrastructure is behind." So that's the balancing act that I think you all are touching on here a little bit. It is that.
All right. Carry on then. So just a couple exhibits to illustrate what I just brought up. This one's for the general fund transfer. So in 2020, really, we want to look at 2018 versus 2020. On the wastewater side, the green table up here, we didn't actually have an increase in 2019, but for 2020, it's about a 30% increase. So over the course of the past eight years, from 2012 to 2020 and to next year, on average, it's about a 7.4% increase per year. But as you can see, in the past, it's gone up, it's gone down. Some years, it's been zero. Bottom line is, you know, I understand the reasoning for it and we just have to find a way to deal with it. It's an extra almost half a million dollars a year that we hadn't really projected in the past fund balances. On the water side, again, we're looking at that same number. It'll be the same number on the stormwater fund as far as what they transfer. And for 2020, it's about an 18% increase. In 2019, about a 10% increase, and I believe a lot of that was due to costs that we paid into the general fund to pay off debt for LeMille Village, I think. So that's the general fund transfer and this is, you know, a chart that I threw in here to illustrate the winter quarter average and.
Randy, could you go back?
Yeah.
Go back to that slide, just a comment I would make, because I think you've heard me say, historically, I think we've undercharged the utility for the administrative support and function that we provide them. As much as we've tried to keep that as a separate functioning entity, we provide a lot of overhead to that facility. There was a number, a couple of positions we identified that are solely utility that the general fund had been picking up as opposed to the utility fund. So some of the larger increases proposed for 20 are somewhat CIP-related to or are helping us with our overall provision of services and more in the CIP realm. The switch to the voice-over IP, some new HR software, those utility positions turn over quite a bit. You know, it's not great working conditions, on-call a lot, working in bad conditions. So that's a big part of what's going to support those two new HR positions. So some of those will continue. The capital improvement will be more variable once some of those things are paid off. The LeMille Village hopefully will sell that and get out from underpaying those extra specials. So I don't think it's fair to say that we anticipate we're going to spend $380,000 each year increasing transfers to the general fund because that's not realistic. But we are implementing cost accounting to be able to show you better as to what that actual cost of supporting the utility is from a general fund perspective.
Yeah, those are numbers that are set annually by City Manager's Office and Finance. And like I said, whatever they are, we just have to account for them and how we produce So as Ron alluded to, some other general fund CIP support items here, he talked about the utility share for the upgrade of the voice-over IP phone system, five-year lease purchase, this HR software and also the citywide record scanning. And then it's been talked about, the equipment reserve fund, the initial transfer into that's going to be from the utilities and, as he alluded to, in order to offset those impacts of the utility fund, they're looking into lease purchasing and financing to help buffer that impact. So getting more into details of the individual funds. So this is the water fund balance chart that we all know and love. Blue is the projected fund balance, red is the recommended fund balance. Recommended being kind of the industry standard of three months of operations, expenses and a year of debt service. And that debt service actually does include the general fund transfer. So that's how we, that's how the recommended fund balance is determined. So just some additional information to kind of tell you the story about how we got where we are today. The line that I just added is what that projected fund balance was before we did the cost of services study. So as you can see, before we did this work, the fund balance was projected to be substantially lower than it is today, at least when you're looking out to 2025. The next line I add is where we thought we would be after we implemented the rate and rate structure changes. So what I guess to take out of this is we're not meeting those projections now, but, you know, the end goal, 2025, we're still about the same. But the last. now, but, you know, the end goal, 2025, we're still about the same. But, the last item to tell is, is that, that current projected general fund transfer for 2020, if I carry that out multiple years, this is what that projected fund balance will look like. So it drops it a little bit, but we're still above that recommended fund level. So, so that 2025, that 10-year window, ends in 2025, we may be looking at something that's just short of $9 million, which, in the cost of services study, our goal and the goals of the consultant was that $9 to $10 million range in 2025. So, another chart that I like to show, just for your purposes, to see where we're landing as far as revenues versus expenses, the blue is revenues, red is expenses, and the dash line is debt service. Again, for the most part, most years are, the revenues are exceeding expenses. We are in a, in about a three-year window where the expenses are above or even with revenues. So, the fund balance isn't growing. But, a lot of this, like you said, the, the 2020 line, it could be attributed to other costs that we're passing on to the general fund and/or revenue shortages we're going to experience because of the lower water usage. But as you can see, in out years, we're able to grow the fund because the revenues outpace the expenses. Something that I don't particularly use to decide whether we're going to raise, raise rates or not, but it's good information for us to have, and that's a comp of where we're at in reference to our peer cities. This is a list of mostly first-class cities in Kansas, at least where I could find their rates posted in their ordinance. So, Manhattan is obviously at, near the bottom of that list in terms of our average monthly water bill. And this is, I'm using the AWWA standard of a, of a residential customer that uses seven units of water a month. And so, this represents the 2019 average monthly bill. For 2020 with a 5% increase, it jumps up to 2828. The only thing I, I want to throw out there about this chart is, I assume other cities stay the same because I don't know what they're working on. I don't do a survey to see what they're going to be changing for their out years. So, it, it's a, it's a good illustration to kind of show where we're at in terms of our peer cities. And this is a, this is the sewer, water, water and sewer affordability index, same charts that I've, I've showed in the past. It's directly from the cost of services study. Affordability, affordability index is a ratio of the average monthly bill for the residential customer, seven units a month, in relation to the median household income of the service area. So, just as a reminder, one is considered excellent. So, for water in 2020, we're projected to be a .7 affordability index. So, again, just as a reminder, in, in terms of industry standards, in terms of our peer cities, that average monthly water bill for residential customers looks pretty good. So with all that said about the water fund, the, the three-year phased implementation of that rate, rate study, recommended a 5% increase for 2020. At this point, city staff doesn't see any reason to deviate from that. So, that's really all I have on the water fund. Any other questions before we get into details of the wastewater fund?
Can you just remind us what the cost of services, the COS, said about increases?
So, initially, they wanted, we were recommended to do this in one year. We phased it out over three years because primarily it had the biggest impact on the lowest-volume customers because we got rid of that two, two-unit allowance where the minimum charge included the first two units of water. And then, after 2020, generally, they forecasted a 3% increase or, as needed, inflation plus or minus one. So, really, it's to be determined, but for our purposes, we're projecting a 3% every year after this, which goes, goes back in line, sorry.
This was the third year of the 5%?
2020 will be the third year. 2019 was the second year. So, that 3% is in line with where we were at before. The, the, a couple of years before that, we did 2% or 3% every year.
There was, there's one thing I, I'm not quite clear on. Your first slide that looks like this?
Yeah.
Still trying to figure out what the blue was.
So, the blue is going to be the recommended, or sorry, the projected fund balance.
So, that was projected, because when, when we did the pre-COS, that was the second slide.
Yeah.
That shows the blue being reduced below the red, right?
Yeah.
And then, when we did the post-COS projection, which is the next one, that should have filled up with blue, right?
It should have.
And then, the current projection, given what you've just briefed on, is that larger dotted line in the middle.
Yeah. And that is, that is if we took that, the increase of the general fund transfer,
Right.
which is $1,675,000 for 2020. If we assume that that stays the same, that'll impact the projected water fund balance as shown with that, that dash line right there.
So my question was, between the first two slides, I'm not quite sure what the first one meant. In other words, that was a projection based on what?
Based on the rates at the time, and rates and expenses that were forecasted at the time. So, so...
But the second slide says pre-COS, so what's the first one?
The first one is where we are now. If, if the general fund transfer stays, if, if it goes back to being, I think, like $1.4 million per year. So, I, I haven't really been given the direction.
The first slide is without any transfers?
Well, we always have transfers.
Yeah. But I mean, the, the transfers that were at the pre-19 levels?
Yes.
Okay.
But my, my assumption is those are going to stay the same. I mean, they, we don't, they don't generally go down.
Yeah.
I haven't projected that they go up, although maybe it would probably wise to...
That's good. That's fine, yeah.
Hey Randy, go one more. Okay. And, nope, go back one. So on this slide, also, correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, the larger dash line includes your 5% as proposed in your summary slide.
Absolutely.
That makes sense.
5% for this year, 3% after.
And for years, yeah.
So that, that's, I guess, our best new prediction based on transfers, CIP, equipment reserve, all those hits, plus revenues and so forth, with the 5%. The answer? Okay, thank you.
I have two quick questions.
Sure.
The first one, I think maybe you've provided this before, but I just can't remember. Do we have any examples of like, in terms of a consumption, our top 10 customers consume the same amount of water as our bottom 3,000 customers? Do we have any data like that?
Not that we update regularly. When we, when I originally proposed, or when we implemented this, I had some top, top 20 customers, and, you know, generally, case state consists in the top 10, and then you've got Culver Hills. So, as far as water consumption, I generally look at it in terms of, kind of like we do sewer, you've got your base consumption, which is reflective of what people use for everyday life, and that's why we use the winter quarter average. And then you've got everything else, which is primarily irrigation. So, I can't really break it down into commercial customers versus residential customers, but I do know, I mean, during, during the course of a year, the base use is 5 to 8 million gallons a day. And then during the summertime, it's anywhere from 10 to 18 million gallons a day.
So, and, and so that's a good segue into my next question, because that wasn't here when we initially established all of these rate changes or this plan. And so, pretty much if I use three units, or I use 500 units, I get charged the same rate?
Yes.
Right? So, I mean, is it typical that cities have standard rates like that, or is there, like, consumption, as consumption goes up, your rate goes up?
It varies across the board. We used to be a declining block system. So prior to this cost of services, and, and this goes back to even before I was here, Ron and Bernie and everybody that was here then can attest to what we did. But, you know, we, we essentially went through a five-year rate flattening process where the, the residential customer, for the people that used the, the leased water, I guess the best way to put it is they were subsidizing high-water, high-volume customers because they were paying less per unit. There's, there is as many different systems as there are stars in the sky, I think. Even just going through the, the 15-odd cities that I looked at to, to develop, you know, the, the city comparison, every city's got their own different structure. Some are based on your customer class. Ours was, I think, intended to be based on customer class. So, have, if you used certain blocks, there were higher amounts, you paid less.
When the consultant came in, I mean, his argument was, this was the industry standard and the correct way to both reduce water usage and be fair to customers.
Yeah. I, I think it's the APWA recommended methodology in terms of cost-to-serve basis. There's, there's many different ways you can structure your rates to achieve that. I think the point was, this was a, a recommended way. This seems to be the, the fairest way to, to capture, you know, fixed variable capacity costs in a, in a, in a way that's fair for that particular customer class.
When, I think last year, when you came here, you had, we were discussing connection fees and things like that. So we had a bracket. You know, we had how many commercial customers we have in this bracket, how many we have in that bracket, and how many, the bottom bracket, the high bracket was KSU. And then we had Walmart or something, I forget. But, you know, you had two or three in there, and the other schools were in there. So, when you, what we wanted to make sure is that people weren't being rewarded relatively by using more water. Your rates got less the more water you brought out, so...
And, and now, the way the structure's set up, you capture those, those impacts that a particular customer has, you capture that through the meter surcharge. So if you have a larger meter, it indicates how much you can impact the system. You pay more for that meter charge. It's a part of the minimum charge, but it's, it's a separate part, and it's specifically intended to capture that capacity cost that we incur.
Makes sense. Um, yeah, I'll have to go read more about that recommendation. But the, just, I mean, what we have now is definitely, in my, my view, better than what we did have. But just from my initial assessment, I'm kind of, I guess I'm kind of a consumption tax person. Like, you meet your basic needs and everything, every, once you start to overuse the system, you should pay more for that system. And so, when I think about these rate increases, it's for somebody who is conserving water in their home. Like, I don't even wash my clothes in a washer anymore. I literally wash them in a hand crank washer because it uses less energy and less water. And then I, yeah, I'm ridiculous, I know. And then I drive down the street and I see somebody who is watering their grass two hours a day because they want to grow a non-native grass in Manhattan. And it, to me, it's like, when we talk about water usage and we talk about like what a precious resource that is, sometimes it, like, what can we do to de-incentivize those behaviors? And I think this gets a little bit closer to that, but just kind of the mindset I'm at in the moment.
You know, we haven't talked about doing it anytime soon, but there is always the option to implement some sort of surcharge for those that use the most water, so that they are, in a sense, penalized for using more water.
And I do completely understand, like, even if that was maybe the 10 or 15-year ago, had that been the change, that would have been a really aggressive change all at once. So, I don't know, just something that I think about.
So see, I think the cost of service, because we started working on this years ago, is, is the right way to go. And a lot of people talked about, well, you know, should we charge more to get people to conserve water? And, and I'm really not for that unless you have a water shortage. And, and right now, we've got excess capacity. So, I mean, I mean, the idea was, you know, every time you use a gallon of water, you pay for the cost of that gallon of water. If you want to use 10, you pay for 10 gallons. If you want to use five, you pay for five. And there's real no, there's really no gain in trying to incentivize people not to use water unless you don't have the capacity to produce it. And so if we get to that, then fine. But, but right now, it just needs to be fair. And we, we balanced it so that, you know, industry's paying the same as the residential customer. That was, that was part of the reason for, for raising those. And so, I think we're headed the right way.
So Randy, I have a question for you. Can you tell me back to your cities, the city graph chart that you had? What is the population in Atchison? Do you know?
I couldn't tell you.
Is it, we're at 54?
It's like 10,000 or 15,000, yeah.
10 or 15,000. I thought it was much smaller than us. And they're charging $65?
I mean, you, you just keep in mind, this is, they have different, different rate structures, and so they're, they may have a different way of collecting revenue from their industries, but...
And maybe they're...
This is just the residential customer, which, just like us, their residential customer makes up the majority of their, their customer base.
At, Atchison is 10,636 as of 2017.
Or they may have just built a new water treatment plant and, and are having to pay for it.
Because that seems quite extraordinary.
Well, on, on this other side of things, you've got, this is Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, so they serve all of Wyandotte County and, and Kansas City, Kansas. And so, they're right there in the same boat. They're obviously not to the tune of Atchison.
It depends on the businesses that are there, because I think they probably pick up a bigger, they pay more, if they have larger businesses.
They could have been like we were, you know, way back before I was here. We hadn't adjusted rates for years and years and years until 2008, when we had to plan for a big water plant expansion.
If you're pulling out of a lake, you've got different processing that has to be done if you're pulling out of a well too, so...
And Atchison is on the Missouri River, which is at flood stage in any given year. So, yeah, I was just wondering, the huge...
That's why I said, it's, it's a good tool to have, just to tell a story. Everybody's got a different story. We shouldn't change our rates based on what these, these guys have. I mean, our situation is our situation, but it's a, it's a good...
Gives a snapshot, but at the same time, you can interpret in so many different ways.
Yeah. So that, in the past, I've hesitated to show these kind of slides. It was used in the cost of services study as a, as a, as a comparative tool. I mean, I've always been of the mindset, we got to do what we have to do to, to, you know, serve our customers and support our system. So, wastewater? Anybody?
Your color's upside down, Randy.
Uh, yeah. Well, it's been like that for a while. So, so a little bit different picture or story to tell on the wastewater side. Again, some of the questions you were asking about this, this graph, Mayor Dodson, are the same. It's, it's even dramatically different from what, what I presented to you in December, largely in part because they were, were incurring more expenses from the, you know, assisting the general fund. But it's primarily because we've changed that philosophy, how we project future revenues, based on the decline in the winter quarter average. So, right now, my biggest concern is 2021 potentially being, having a, a reserve of $1 million or slightly less. So, but same story to tell, as far as a little walk back into history. This was the projected fund balance that we were looking at before we even started the cost of services study. This is where we thought we would be after we implemented these new rate, rate structures. And, again, this is where that projected fund balance would be if we continue that larger general fund transfer into the out years. So, you know, I can only assume that's going to be the case. So, in, in a couple of years, what we thought we were going to have at close to $9 million in 2025 is now less than two. And actually, there's, there's a half a dozen different reasons that you can point at as to why we're there. I think the main reason is just because that analysis, that model, used some assumptions based on growth and winter quarter average that were just absolutely wrong. And there's really no way to, to dance around it. I mean, it's, I think the analysis and the model wasn't accurate. So, that's the situation we're in today. Things can change over the next few years, but in general, the wastewater funds, a little bit more difficult to, to project and to wrap my head around. And so, my task is really, what do we want to do to fix this, or how can we fix this?
Isn't this model just going to get worse each year that we don't have an upturn in the, in the Kansas economy and in our local economy? In the, in the Kansas economy and in our local economy?
Well, it goes back to, the things I can control are how much revenue we're bringing in. And I can control that by adjusting rates.
Oh, I know.
I can somewhat control our, our expenses by what projects we do. But in general, you know, most of that, those fixed costs are going to be, they're going to be there no matter what.
But if the model, as you said, was just plain wrong, then don't we have some kind of need to revise the model?
Well.
Because we're not, this isn't going to get any better.
No, and that's, that's why.
Next year, it's not going to.
That's why I've changed the projections. I think this is about the last thing we can do to make sure that we're looking at what I hope is the worst-case scenario. Things can get better, you know, the growth may start going higher. You know, when we did this, we were building two hundred and fifty new connections a year. Now we're less than a hundred. I think we were maybe at a hundred and twenty-five last year. From the building permits I've seen through June, we were substantially less as far as new residential and commercial connections. So, um, I've tried to make this projection, as accurate as I can get it. I don't, it may get worse, it may get better, but that's, that's about the best information I have at this time.
So this, this is reoriented toward the fact that we have had twenty-five building permits this ye, so far this year?
Not, no, not generally. We still assume.
Through the rest of the year, let's say we have seventy by the end of the year. Has, is this being restructured for that?
We, we've become less reliant on projecting growth with this forecast. We've been, we scaled it back quite a bit. Like I said, we, we look at, we assume that we're going to have a decline in the winter quarter average of two and a half percent, and then maybe growth at one percent. And, uh, everybody that's not a residential customer stays the same or increases a little bit. And that's how I ended up at negative one percent. I'd like to say I could project it at one percent increase every year. It's just, it's not the reality.
The, your heavy dotted line there, it connects to 2021?
Yeah.
Shouldn't it conduct, connect to 2020 or not?
No, because that is, this is the projected beginning fund balance. So for 2021, that assumes that.
So that's what you said in the beginning, the beginning fund balance is going to be lower?
So that, that'll factor, so the, the true impact of having an additional three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the general fund transfer in 2020 is that the beginning fund balance for the next year will be reduced.
Then the, when you get to the next slide, when revenues are over expenses in those out-years, is that, is that the speed that the dotted line turns up?
So.
In your previous slide, I mean, is that so small that it only turns up that quickly?
Well, what I have here is, this is the revenue line, what it is currently. This dash line is what it was before we assumed that we were going to have a negative one decline in the winter quarter average. So that, and the bottom line is that there, the difference between those two lines is a difference of revenue that, that we won't see because we've made that change in how we forecast future revenues and future consumption.
But your revenue is still above expense.
It is, and, and I, you know, that's a positive for me. It's just that.
Is that amount, I guess my question is, when you go to the previous slide, does that amount account for that slope in the line, that dotted line?
Well, the, the bigger the margin is between those two, the fa, the more you can grow your reserves. So by reducing the revenues from that line to that line, it is limit us in how fast we can grow our reserves. I, I mean, it's obviously, it's compounding year to year, but it is really, yeah. You say it's how we can accelerate revenues. To me, it's the higher, the higher this line is, the more quickly we can grow our reserve fund. And right now, it's depleting.
So I guess the, one of the relevant questions here is the transfers to the general fund, particularly in wastewater, is there a, do we have some kind of projection on that one? I mean, you, you said in the beginning, it's not going to be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, but do we kind of know up to 2025?
No, we really haven't. And that, that's why I qualified that we really want to get a better, better cost accounting of how much our workforce and admin in facilities are supporting the utility so that we could make those projections.
And that's why I haven't projected, you know, a growth in that transfer, because I, I don't know what it's going to be. I don't, it could go down.
So you just straightlined the, whatever it is, the three fifty or something, or?
Well, I, I'm, I'm making the assumption that whatever we do in 2020 is going to stay the same. Because I'm looking at kind of worst-case scenario.
All right.
And I, I, I appreciate what Ron's saying. And I, I don't really get to see what goes into that fund transfer. I understand why and the justification behind it. I'm, I'll never argue that, you know, the, the support we get from City Manager's Office and Finance Department and HR is totally justified.
Well, I mean, in industry, they just call these distrib, you just take your overhead and push it across wherever it needs to be.
Yeah.
Pretty well understood.
It's one of the, one of the major, I guess, uncertainties of what we're trying to project. So I can only assume that it's going to stay the same. Uh, same set of information on the average monthly sewer bill comps to other cities. So on the sewer side in 2019, average residential customer pays a bill of thirty-five ninety-two. Uh, so we're in the middle of the pack. With the five percent increase, that bumps you up to thirty-seven sixty-nine. Again, it's, it's middle, it's, depending on the way you want to look at it, I see it as we're kind of in the top of the middle tier. Just as long as we're not on the right. I can say, take, take it for what it's worth. It's, it's a, it's a story to tell. Doesn't really factor in my decision-making.
But it isn't really told there is, where's that community at in their expansion and capacity? So one of the big hits on the wastewater on either side is if you've got to make major plant improvements, especially on sewer, if you're going to add a lot more treatment capacity, you know, that, that's a big hit. And so you, you would tend to jump in the scheme of things and you're ranking there significantly. And fortunately, from right now, capacity-wise, we're, we're pretty good. For the near future, we do have, like, as Randy indicated, our biosolid stuff, we need to do some growth in to, to help meet some of those future projections. And we're doing some, some good improvements that are on the drawing board now, so.
Same bit of information on the affordability index. The wastewater side, it's not quite as rosy pictured, but point nine-one is still under one. So if you want to consider affordability, a very important factor, as long as we're near one or under one in terms of what we're charging for our services, this is, we're in good shape as far as what we're proposing with the five percent increase for 2020. So I guess brass taxes is, what do we need to do from here on out? Is the five percent increase adequate? In 2020, it's usually the decision we face every year. But unfortunately, you know, we've talked about it in the past, it's, we've tried to, tried to stick to that five percent rate increase, that, that three-year phased-in recommendation that, that you guys, as the commission, instructed us to do. Just in general, from my perspective as the fund manager, I don't think that's going to be adequate. If we want to improve the, the stability of the fund, and for me, that means a fund balance that is at least what's recommended industry standards, that six million dollar range. I think generally, we're going to have to look at adding about a million dollars a year in revenue. That's just a number that I, I have not necessarily thrown out there. I've, I've, I've put some analysis into it. And I'll show you here on the next slide is, is why. Because if we add a million dollars to the, to the revenue starting in 2020, and I will preface that by saying, that million dollars is in addition to what we would increase for the five percent increase for 2020. So it's a five percent increase plus another million dollars. That's what it would take to get the fund balance back to where I think it should be to that industry-recommended level. And for us in 2025, that's just a little bit more than, a little under seven million dollars. And I know that's a big number to throw out there, but I guess if I'm going to make a recommendation to deviate from the five percent, I need to have a, a number of what we need in order to, and show why we need it. So if I had, if it was just me managing the fund and I said, here's what we need to do to shore up the fund, just in general, a million dollars a year would do that. So I'm presenting that to you as, as, not necessarily a recommendation at this point. I'm just showing you, this is what it would take to make that fund whole and get it to where we think we need to have it, or I think we need to have it, industry says it should be.
What additional percentage of rate would a million dollars be?
Okay, so I've got some information here. I didn't have that in the memo. I spent the last couple of days looking at some scenarios, and I can go through those now if you'd like.
Sorry, I jumped ahead.
That's all right.
The wastewater didn't have a three percent in mind like we do for water after we got the five percent for three years?
I'm sorry. Say that again.
On water, we had five percent for three years.
Yes.
To get through the initial bubble.
Yeah.
But then we assumed that there'd be increases after that.
Yeah, same, same, uh, projected increases, at least what was shown in the cost of services study, three percent every year after that.
Okay.
So.
So the, but the transitional period was similar.
Yes.
Five percent.
Yeah, so that, that first year, you can't really put a percentage on it because it was just an overall change in the structure. But second and third year, both funds were five percent.
And I think, you know, essentially, we undershot that. So that five percent ended up not being enough. And so that's kind of what, what our options going forward to correct that, correct that error.
And that's, you say, the, the word there, Ron, is correction. You know, when I look at what we need to do in 2020, I look at it as a, as a correction. It's not a rate increase. It's what have we got to do to correct the status of the fund so that we can ensure its viability for not just the next five years, but years after that? Like I mentioned, we, we plugged in a lot of capital improvement projects for the wastewater fund after 2025, after 2030. So while I'm looking at a small window of time, the next five years, this has a drastic impact on where we're at after that, too. But for now, I got to focus on what I can, what I can impact, and that's the next five years. So getting into that, the same revenues versus expenses, it really just shows kind of what we're talking about is, is if we increase our revenues, the higher they are over the expenses, the quicker we can build that reserve level. And so how do we produce a million dollars of revenue? And there's one, two ways, and I did mention this in the memo. So we have about fifteen thousand, eight hundred customers, so just under sixteen thousand customers. Uh, generally, if you look at where you can change the rates, I look at two places. I look at the minimum charge and I look at the unit rate. So looking at them singularly, if we wanted to raise a million dollars just by impacting the minimum charge, every dollar that you increase the minimum charge produces an extra hundred and ninety thousand dollars of revenue. So in order for us to produce a million dollars in extra revenue, we have to raise that minimum charge five dollars and twenty-seven cents in addition to what we would have done for that five percent rate increase. Uh, conversely, on the other side of things, if we wanted to focus on the unit charge, uh, in general, you can assume that we're going to sell about two million units of sewer a year. So in order to make a million dollars, that's a fifty cent increase to the unit charge. So, uh, now you're not going to, I wouldn't make a change to any, either, either one of these individually. It's got to be a combination of the two, because if you just do the unit charge, while you're impacting, you're impacting mostly those, those highest, highest users, the, the K-states, the hospitals, school districts, so the, the largest consumers. And if, if you do just the minimum charge, the customers you're impacting most are, you know, the, the customers, the residential, commercial customers that only use a couple of units a month. So, um, it depends on who you want to impact the most. So, you know, what I, what I did is I looked at, why do we need this million dollars? And for me, it's, half of it is because variable costs need to, we're losing, we're losing costs through the winter quarter average, that's a variable cost. The other factor is we're increasing our expenditures. Those are, uh, for the most part, fixed costs, because where they're going to the general fund and other places. So to me, it's a fifty-fifty cost share between the minimum charge and the unit charge. And so this is a kind of the scenario that I, I laid out for you guys to, to show how we could, how we could add a million dollars of revenue and how it'd impact customers. And I just, I just said, I want to remind you that this additional million dollars is on top of the five percent increase for 2020. So with what I just laid out, I'm sorry. So in order to generate a half million dollars from the minimum charge, you have to raise it two dollars and sixty-five cents. In order to generate half a million dollars from the unit charges, you have to raise it twenty-five cents. And so what that would do, if you look at 2020, phase three, that rate implementation as was proposed, and then 2020, if we modified it for this scenario. I just, I'm just throwing it out there. This isn't a recommendation. This is just a scenario I'm providing for you. So, uh, this is customer impacts. And so if we, if we did this scenario and you're looking at the difference between the nineteen and twenty average monthly bill, these are the six primary customer categories that, that we look at. And just so you know, that the residential low, the residential average, those consist of, like I said, eighty-five, eighty to eighty-five percent of our customer base. So if you look at the impact of making this hypothetical change, it looks like a pretty drastic hit to these, to these customers. So a monthly, a monthly bill increase of twenty-two percent for a residential customer that only uses a couple of units a month, all the way to a thirteen percent increase for an average business that uses fifty units a month, or really, the more common occurrence is a, a medium, a medium business that uses twenty units a month. So they would increase fourteen percent. So that's not a very pretty picture to paint, and so I've tried to find a better way to paint this. Uh, and to do that, what you got to do is go back a couple of years. And so the story I'm trying to tell is, when we implemented this cost of services recommendations, this is an actual slide that I used in 2017, comparing at the time what that bill increase is going to be. So as you can see, for, for these, now, what I'm showing is the five primary customer classes that make up, I would say, eighty-five to ninety percent of our customer base. In 2018, all of those customers saw a decrease in their monthly sewer bill. Uh, it's just the way it worked out. And in hindsight, that's another reason why we're probably in the situation we're in, because we took most of our customers and we lowered their bill. So I think this is important because the next, I'm going to try to show this to you graphically, and, and it kind of just, honestly justifies what, what I'm proposing in this scenario. But, so this is a, this is a chart that shows over time what that average residential bill looks like for the, for the residential low customer that uses two units a month, the residential average customer that uses seven units a month. That box there shows the three-year phase-in period. And so as you can see, in nineteen, or sorry, in eighteen, everybody's bill dropped. And so what I've done is I've, well, this, I'm sorry. This dash line shows what that average monthly bill would be. This dash line shows what that average monthly bill would be for the scenario where we're producing an extra million dollars. And so what I've done is tried to fit a general trend line to those, to these charts. And the story I want to tell is that if we, if we enacted this hypothetical scenario where we're trying to raise a million dollars, and if in 2017, we weren't even considering the, the cost of services study or those rate changes, and if we would've carried on with our annual three percent increases every year, which is kind of what this trend line shows, we get to this point in 2020. And where we would've been is essentially the same as what I'm proposing under this hypothetical scenario. So in a roundabout way, I'm saying, we took a trip to the same location, we just took a different route. So while it, while it doesn't paint a very good picture to say, we're raising everybody's bill by fifteen to twenty percent from nineteen to twenty, it does, it does paint a little bit better picture when I say, you know, if we go back and compare it to 2017, it's generally where, the, the 2020 bill is generally where it would've been if we would've kept raising rates gradually over that three-year period. So like I said, it's a hypothetical scenario. It's not something I'm recommending. I'm just showing you how we can get there. And I know one of the most important things is how's it gonna impact our customers? And for the majority of our customers, that's where it's gonna put them. Right there, on that trend line that, except for the most part, matches where we would've been had we not done cost of services anyways. So far going, does that, I mean, does that make sense, that kind of justification, that story that I told? I mean, the bottom, bottom line is that point right there is kind of the story I'm trying to tell. On the business side, I didn't, I didn't project out that trend line, but on the lower, the lower end user on the business side, you could, you could probably project out a trend that says the same story. Twenty twenty average monthly bill would be about the same as it would've been had we not done cost of services recommendations, had we just done a three percent growth every year. For anybody above that, anybody that uses more than twenty units a month on the business side, they're gonna be paying more. So on, on the same note, what that average monthly bill would be during this scenario, 2020, this is the same chart I showed you earlier. Five percent increase would be a monthly bill thirty seven sixty nine, again, average residential customer bill. And if we enacted this scenario, you're looking at an average monthly bill of forty two dollars and nine cents. So again, this is just a scenario I'm trying to show of what it would take to produce an extra million dollars of revenue. And that's, that's it.
Wouldn't we maybe go back to consider this a little bit more detail? That some of those charts that you have in the back, the customer impacts that we currently had forecast without your, without trying to flatten that curve. If we went back to say, just to show people, twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, so you get kind of an idea of what those rates were in progressive fashion, it, it helps explain that box. In other words, if we would've just stayed on track without that decrease in your rate for 2019, here's what it would've looked like.
Yeah.
In, in numbers, you know?
And that's, that's about the only way I can present that and justify it and say, I'm not, you know, the nineteen to twenty numbers, that, they are what they are. They look, they look bad. I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna pay that increase. But, I mean, I could, I can make a scenario out of it that says, well, that's, it's, we're at the same place. We just took a different, different road to get there.
And I think, you know, if we, if we looked out beyond 2025 and we did nothing, it gets scarier.
Yes.
So we catch up at a rapid pace on the chart, but you know, once you extend the chart out to the right, the funding is required out there to do the things we're gonna need to refurb and maintain, so.
And that, that's why I made the statement. This is, this isn't, this wouldn't be a typical rate increase. This would be a correction. We'd be fixing where I think the cost of service study was inaccurate. Like I said, there's, there's a half a dozen factors that went into that. And there's things that aren't related in the cost of service study, like the winter quarter average and additional expenses going to the general fund.
So the idea is to do a, a little bit more work on transfers out of the general fund. That helps kind of create where that line might be in the future. And then we can consider what the rate or what the, what the beginning fee looks like for this.
I think so. And then I think the other thing we can bring back to you is just some additional scenarios that, that look at a combination of how we go about spreading that out and correcting, you know, probably should've been a six percent, probably shouldn't have done a big decline like we did. You might recall though, the, the way that worked out was there was a, the, the decline in the sewer kind of offset the increase in the water.
Right.
And so the water fund's doing great, the sewer fund's not. Some of that's probably based on lack of growth and other, and other lower efficiencies and that sort of thing. So, or higher efficiencies. So I think we can bring you back some scenarios. It's not a decision we need to make immediately, but I think we should make it soon. And, and whether you want to spread it out in one year or, you know, instead of having a three-year, we go to another year phase in. So we adjust that a little bit more would be some different scenarios that we could, we could bring back.
Could you also consider not using the January, December, January, February as the model and just charging, setting the rates for all twelve months? I mean.
Well, without being able to meter each individual.
It sounds to me like we need to shake things up a little bit. This isn't working.
Well, without being, like I said, without being able to meter every individual sewer connection, that makes it hard to do. I have talked about, well, we're a university town. And so is the three-month, the act, is December, January, February the, the right thing to do? Or do we need to add a month to it? Do we need to do two months? There's several cities that, that do a four-month average. So it's a, they do December through March and they use that. I think generally speaking, you know, in our city, average daily flow at the wastewater plant is five million gallons a day. During the winter months or during summer months, when the students are gone, it instantly drops by the half a million gallons a day. And, you know, generally, they leave mid-December and come back into January. And so is that throwing it off? I don't know. The one thing that we do do is because we're kind of a transient community where a lot of our customers are moving from year to year, you have to establish a winter quarter average. If you're new to a residence, say a student moves from a house, one house to another, they automatically revert to the citywide winter quarter average as far as what, what they get billed every month. So if you haven't been into residence for more than one year, you have not established a winter quarter average. So you go, by default, you go to the citywide average. And I think that right now, that, I think we list that as five.
Five?
Yeah. So I think finance looks at that every couple of years to see, do we need to decrease that? But by default, you know, maybe ten thousand of our customers, they're moving from year to year. And so we don't really know what their true winter quarter average is because when they move, we set them as a default as five. They may be using a lot more than that if you've got a house with eight students living in it, or it may be a lot less than that, but.
I just know that we have to get this balanced and I don't know, we have to have a winter quarter average. We have to set our sewer rate to match our water rate, which is, anyway. So we can be creative. We could certainly look at the other university towns, and maybe you already do. But I think it's time for something.
I mean, the biggest factor is always gonna be irrigation, and that's the general driver behind it. Because the winter quarter average is the best way to determine a customer's base water or sewer consumption. That's why, that's what makes it hard to do. I mean, we, we know what our, for the most part, what our revenues are gonna be throughout the year because every customer, most of the customers are paying the same thing every month for their sewer bill. And we don't run into issues where, well, it's hard to project what our total revenues are gonna be for the year at the six-month mark. We generally know what they're gonna be because they're, for the most part, set. That, I mean, it's a good question. I don't think it's gonna make up the deficit that we need to make up doing something like that, but it's something to consider. And I've said it in passing, is do we need to change it just because of the content of our customer base? I can certainly look into what other communities do, but for the most part, it's a winter quarter average based system.
You may have just answered that question, my question a little bit, but does, when you bring back scenarios to us, do you foresee every scenario increasing that minimum charge more than we had initially estimated when you were first creating this plan?
You mean, when, when we proposed a rate increase and then decided to phase it out over three years?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I, well, yeah, I think it would be higher. One thing I could probably show you is, and I have it in the memo, of what our minimum charge used to be.
Yeah, I, I think I'm looking at it right now. Yeah.
And so there was a time when, you know, you gotta take it with, for what it is because the, the minimum charge for 2017 was twenty one dollars and twenty cents, but you also had two units of water or sewer that you were allowed to use. So you didn't have to pay for those first two units of water. In other words, that, that unit rate, you didn't pay that until you used a third unit or a fourth unit. So that has a value of, like I say, six dollars. So those, those two units that we gave away, say in 2017, had a value of six dollars and forty cents roughly. Well, that would, that would go back and make the minimum charge fifteen dollars. So, I mean, it's not apples and apples, but we did drastically reduce the minimum charge in 2018. But the other component of that is the minimum charge has two components. There's that base charge plus the sewer, or the capacity charge based on the meter. And for a residential customer, average typical meter side is, is one, one inch or three quarters inch. And I want to say that capacity charge is a couple of dollars if you're inside the city. So, actually, sorry, that's on the water side. So on the sewer side, in twenty, twenty twenty, the typical residential meter surcharge is three dollars and sixty two cents. So if you add that to what we're proposing in that scenario, which is eleven dollars, total minimum charge would be about fourteen or fifteen dollars.
The, I would definitely, I mean, I'm definitely curious to see your recommendations and just think about this a little bit more. But it kind of goes back to my other comment. I really can't get off of it. I wanted to help generate the revenue for the wastewater fund, but I also, I also want to help drive behavior. The, whether this is an abundant resource for us now or not, doesn't mean that we shouldn't set up rate types or set up rates to help drive behavior. Cause I mean, if that's, if that's the direction that we're going, that's kind of the insight that they had out in Western Kansas with Aquifer, and that's not working out really well right now for us either. So this, I guess for me, this isn't just a revenue thing. So I would just be curious and to, to hear a little bit more about some of those things as, as you're presenting them. I, I just want to make sure that the average payer, the renter that's in college, that I actually pay, I rent, but I pay my sewer and water bill, that, that's not, that base amount isn't where we're setting the majority of the burden. Cause those also are probably tend to be our lowest users as well. And it's where we can drive behavior and help conservation efforts. So that's, that's just my thought. Obviously, a lot more details are needed and I look forward to putting that together, seeing those.
It goes back to, well, well, maybe the model of the cost of services was wrong on the wastewater side. The intent was right. It's the cost to serve basis, I think is, I believe in it a hundred percent. Because you should pay for what, your fair share of what it costs the city to serve you. Whether you're the college student that lives by himself and uses two, two to three units a month, or the industry that uses a thousand. So I think the, the rate structure is set up to do that, and I think it's fair and I think it's appropriate. And like, like you said, if, if somebody wants to use a thousand gallons of water or a thousand units of water a month to irrigate their lawn, I'm okay with that because we have the capacity to do so and we have a rate structure and a, and a capacity surcharge set up to charge you appropriately to do that. Same thing on the sewer. So, I mean, philosophically, I think it's right. But yeah, there's, there's definitely options that we need to look at as far as, and we need to know, how much more do we need to generate? Is it a million dollars? Is it half a million dollars? I mean, there, there's several options that we can, we can look at. This was just the one that I had time to look at this week and seemed to be about the most appropriate based on how we thought we should split that up, based on, is it a fixed cost or is it a variable cost?
And it's probably just something that I need to meet with you or the city manager about since I wasn't a part of that initial conversation, making sure that they're just not part of the story in terms of a good philosophical argument on the way that, that this is a better way than maybe the way that I'm proposing, just to make sure I understand. But again, yeah, maybe I, I just care maybe a little bit more about the water usage itself than funding, but I'm open to hearing other ideas.
I, I have another question that is not worth a million dollars. When we allow or agree to provide a water and sewer, and/or sewer hookup to someone outside of the city limits, and there's an additional charge or a weighted amount, they have to agree to be annexed at some future time if, when the city's ready. When they are annexed, does their water sewer bill revert to the in, in-city rate?
Yes.
Okay. I wondered. Thank you. Just looking at the charges.
So yeah, there's, there's a surcharge. It's different for the water and for the wastewater. One's a fifty percent surcharge, the other one's a hundred percent surcharge. So that's.
You wanna try a stormwater now?
Not me.
Oh, you have one more? Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think most of the appliances these days are built for water efficiency or other efficiencies. I think you can't buy the waste saving, even, even toilets. They just have, yeah. And so they're already towards that level. One thing I would like to see in your, and when we discuss this in the future is when you talk about stormwater fees, you have this nice chart that has some of the businesses such as Old Chicago and Home Care Hospice and all of those things. I would like to see that for water and wastewater as well. It gives me a better idea as to what does small business, average business and high business, what that looks like. You have Woodrow Wilson as an example for a school. So something like that I would like to see. It gives, like I said, a better perspective. I like to see the cities, but it doesn't tell me about our community as much as what they would be paying.
And I could do that. I mean, predominantly, there's, there's, there's K-State.
Right.
And.
And here what you have, I don't know. Yeah, you had, oh, okay, you have that.
Make everybody sick by going through.
Cause I have it on the other wastewater PowerPoint.
So I didn't have this in the, these are other slides.
Yeah, these are your impacts. And I have this. It's, it's in this, it's in this.
I mentioned in the memo, you know, the one high business customer that I've showed in there, we don't have many of these customers that use twenty five hundred units a month. This is the hospital, and I, I mentioned that in the memo.
Right.
I mean, most of our highest water users are, you know, irrigation, the golf courses. And then trailer courts, you know, big residential developments that are multifamily, but they're considered commercial just because of their nature. And they're master metered, so Red Bud and University Park, or not University Park, but University Commons. So those, those type of customers. And of course, there's our. And of course, there's our wholesale customers, Pla County on the sewer side.
You kind of, kind of have the same kind, like you have Alpatron, Old Chicago, Walmart, Kansas Farm Bureau, just the, just the same ones. It doesn't have to be something different, but add, throw in Kansas State University and maybe Colbert Hills. And show that as how it applies to water, wastewater, and stormwater fees. That way I can have a better idea of what it would be comprehensive as far as their fees and fee structure for them. Thank you.
I've always tried to generalize it, but I can definitely show some examples.
Yeah, my thoughts on looking at that, first thing is, you know, you showed a couple of slides where revenues seem to exceed expenses, yet we want to throw all this money into the fund, and that, that doesn't seem to make sense to a lot of folks. Because you just want to build up a recommended reserve amount based on the industry standard, but it doesn't look like a crisis. So that leads me to the second point, which is I think we should probably phase this in because we're not going to go bankrupt tomorrow. We don't need to raise it right away. We can phase it in and make it work. And, and I agree with Commissioner McKee. I'm not so sure we want to hit the, you know, the low-end users with picking up 50% of the cost if we do this.
Sure.
Because it's just like the water. What we were trying to do was, you know, if you buy a gallon of water, you pay for a gallon of water. Of course, the problem is, we don't meter wastewater. It's, so it's a bit harder, you know, to, to figure it out. I mean, you know, you pump so many gallons out of the, out of the plant, and you meter the same amount of gallons, and you know what it is. What comes back is, again, you got a guesstimate in there, and that's why you had this, you know, issue, maybe this, this quarterly thing. But I still think maybe if we could figure out a better way to, you know, to, to, to get a handle on how much wastewater is being processed and try to charge it by, you know, by the unit, and that may mean, you know, that, that quarterly rate, and just raising the, the customer amount that everybody's going to pay by a small amount. Now, you had a 50-50 split, which looked good. You know, maybe if you went with a 75-25, it would, it would, it would address that. Though, though I understand every customer has got to get a, a share of the cost of using the entire network. So that makes some sense to do that. But, but I still think the people that should pay more is the ones that use it more. Just like, you know, if the golf course is using lots of water, they pay for the water. And, and, and that's my thoughts on that.
And there's many different opinions on what the recommended fund balance should be. The reason they have that as an industry standard is, I guess I'll take, I'm going to misquote it, is either Omaha or Lincoln, you know, with the floods, they lost their wastewater plan. Now, I think they got it back up in operation in four or five months. They thought it was going to be six or seven months or up to a year. So, I mean, we've had some scenarios just this year where, you know, you mentioned that we're, it's not critical now, but that fund balance is critical to me because if that plan is out of operation for any certain time due to a disaster, you know, we don't have any revenue source. And it's even worse if it's at the water plant. Because you can't get water to them, so you can't charge them for water, and they're not putting water in the system, so you can't charge them for sewer. So that's why those fund balances are critical to me. Because like you said, it's, it covers certain, certain months of operating expenses plus the years worth of debt service where if we don't have those revenues, we're in default. So that's why it's important to me to get them to where I think they should be.
One, one thing that I've said to Ron and Jason too that makes me nervous, we have 135 million, 140 million dollar plan out there, and our fund balance is around a million and a half projected. That makes me nervous. That's, that's not how you would do your personal finances at your home with that small of a reserve. And just like Randy explained on, on how that fund balance is recommended in the industry, that's what makes me nervous. So that's why we're bringing it up this evening, and appreciate all the impact, all the feedback on how we can look at this when we come back at the end of the year for setting rates.
I think the other thing that, that I've certainly noticed as I have approved requests for payments has been just the, we, we don't seem to be able to get as much out of our equipment as we used to, and things wear out quicker. And when you have a biological treatment system that you're dependent on all of that equipment operating appropriately, it, it just puts a lot of burden on you. So, you know, if we would switch to anaerobic, we would be, some of those plants, I think, are anaerobic plants. That cost is a lot higher. So it's just, it's with having an appropriate fund balance to meet some of those unexpected needs is pretty important.
Thank you.
You don't get to do this one? Brian going to do it?
I don't know if Brian went home, but he's, he's up next. I think, I think the five of you scared him so bad he went home.
I just get a little stretch of the legs there. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner is Brian Johnson, City Engineer, here to talk about Stormwater Fund update for 2019 and look at 2020 fee adjustments. So again, the background, in 2018, we also did a cost of services study with Randy and his funds and looked at different ways to rebuild that, how we bill and how the fund is managed. The goal of that flattening program and the goal of the cost of services study was to get us to a 755 equivalent unit by 2022. If you recall from the cost of services study, we found out that A, the fund was underfunded, and B, it wasn't equitable. And so we changed how we bill and we changed how we collect revenue based on those two, those two items that we found out in the cost of services study. We were under what was called a declining block schedule, so back to the wastewater and water discussion. The more you use, the less you pay, and that's not how every other city in Kansas does it, and it's not equitable. So we changed it and went to the equivalent unit method, which is what everybody else uses. So that cost of services study carries us out to 2022, 2019. This slide shows what the rates are set today for commercial and residential. 2020, we're going to propose that third year of the five-year plan, a cost of services study, as a 547 for commercial and a 634 for residential. We have what would be about an 82 cent increase in commercial, comes out to about 984 annually for commercial. And then about a 52 cent increase in residential, comes out to about 624 in residential a year. Then 2021, we'll go to the fourth year in that five-year plan, go to 642, which would be another 95 cents for commercial, 58 cents for residential monthly, 1140 and 696 respectively annually. 2022, then we get to that 755, which was the goal of the cost of services study, get us to a 755 commercial and residential. Be about a buck 13 and 1356 on the commercial side, about 59 cents and about $7.08 on the residential side. So how's the fund balance look? We, we actually, with Rebecca and Bernie's help, we actually budgeted out to 2030. We do about a 10-year fund chart for this fund. As you can see, out in the out-years, starting about 2027, the fund has less in the revenue department than what we would like to see. There's less carryover and there's less of a balance. It actually goes red in about 2027. That delta there is, is what we need to make up in those out-years. So how do we compare to other cities? This is the slide for 465, so this is what we currently pay, that middle column there. And as you can see, we actually are one of the lowest in the state of Kansas, Wichita and Overland Park or less. However, Wichita and Overland Park also have a mill dedication based through property tax. So in Wichita, with your property tax bill, two mills come straight out of that and goes into the stormwater fund. Lenexa is .961 mills. And at the bottom of the graph here, we've got the, we base this on Walmart, this thousand dollars per month. So based on Walmart's valuation, that would add about a thousand dollars a month to their bill, and Overland Park would be about 500. So in this Walmart example for Wichita, that's actually about 1581 is what they're realistically paying for a stormwater fee per month, including those two mills. Overland Park, they'd be paying about 1187, again, based on that .961 mills adding about 500 a month. As you can see, 795 would be the lowest in the state. On the far right in red, we've got the 547, which is what we're going to propose in December for a rate. Again, as you go down this column, you can see, actually, even in 2020, we're going to be one of the lowest in the states, not including whatever these raises are going to be. One thing, as we looked at other cities, they're actually raising rates faster than we are. So not only are we the lowest, we're going to continue to be the lowest because we're not catching up with what their rates are.
So question, can, I mean, like, when I look at, considering all the various flooding issues that we have in our community.
Yes.
Wouldn't, I mean, you comparatively to all these other, wouldn't we see that as a bit of an, like, we're always talking about how do we generate revenue in order to solve those problems? Why isn't this seen as more of an opportunity to do that?
That's a great question. That's something I've obviously wondered a lot too, you know, considering we are bounded on two sides by two major rivers and a gigantic levy, I don't know why. We probably should have higher rates. We probably should generate more revenue in that fund.
Okay.
Other cities probably have had that same question and realized we probably need to generate more money. Because a $3 million reserve and a 50, $60 million levy is not a big number. It's a pretty small reserve considering the infrastructure.
The other aspect that's impacted that are federal and state regulations. So the bigger the city is, the more requirements that you're mandated to meet from stormwater perspectives. So what's the new threshold for population?
I believe it's 100,000.
100,000?
100,000. So we're in NPDES Phase Two. Ron's exactly right. If you're over 100,000, you're in NPDES Phase One. So you have more regulations as far as clean water and, and stormwater discharges. The only city in this case, I believe, would be Wichita and Topeka would be the two that are over 100,000. Would that be correct? I don't think Lenexa is. I don't think Overland Park is. But as you get closer to that 100,000, you need to start thinking about, you know, Lawrence, they need to start thinking about those Phase One regulations.
So the 465 to the $5.47, that equivalent jump, or, yeah, the, how, with that jump in pricing, how much additional revenue are we generating a year from that?
So that total additional revenue, I believe, is about a half million dollars a year. That's about what we increase every year. I can get you an exact number tomorrow, but that's, that's roughly what we generate. We've gone from about 1.5 to about 3. We'll go to about 3.5 and then 4.
Brian, we got what, 41,000 ERUs?
Yes, we have 41,000 equivalent units in the city.
So for every $1 increase?
You generate $41,000 a month, which would be about half a million a year. Thank you. 2018. So as we look back last year and we look at how this became red, because remember last year, this was projected beginning fund balance was above recommended beginning fund balance. So as we look back, well, how did we, how do we invert? How did we flip? Well, 2018, we've got several non-budgeted expenses, and one thing I want to add is, we're not saying that these aren't good programs and that we shouldn't have funded these. What we're saying is, every year, there's always something that comes up that we haven't estimated for later. And there's, there's things that, especially in stormwater, that come up. You know, last year, we had a flooding event. This year, we, we spent a lot of time, money, effort, energy preparing for a flood event. So there's always things that, in the stormwater fund, that, that you just don't anticipate. And so that's why those beginning fund revenues need to be where they're at. Because you never know what the next natural disaster is going to be. So for 2018, some items that we didn't budget that are paid through the fund, design of the levy, $600,000. Wildcat Creek NRCS program, all of the flooding related to that and those natural resources projects, about 77,000 we budgeted. Specials for Lee Mill, about 188,000, and then buyouts, about half a million. And again, those are all great projects. Those are projects that we support, but they're items that we just didn't budget for. And when you add those all up, you're north of a million dollars. You're talking about a 40% of what the annual revenue is in that fund. Do you got a question? Okay.
I would, I would just add, we forecasted for some of them, but we didn't, we, we budgeted for them for the next year, or at least in amount, we overshot some of those amounts.
Yeah.
But we didn't really forecast for them in our rates. So that was, that would be the, the, the big distinction there. And then I think there are some opportunities, for example, the 600,000 in design on the levy that we might be able to recoup if we pass the .3.
So future CIP items in this fund. Remember, through the cost of services study, through the downtown watershed study, about $70 million were the projects identified just in the downtown watershed, downtown, east downtown, west watershed. So these are some of those CIP projects that we do have in that cost of services study, or I'm sorry, yeah, that were included in the cost of services study. The North Channel Project, TCB, about $3 million. That actually was in the 2018 CIP. We'll go to construction next year on that one. For 2020, you'll see a CIP request for South Manhattan Interceptor. That's for next year. It's about $9 million project. The goal of that project is to intercept stormwater that goes down South Manhattan, all the way from Points down to Wildcat Creek. Eventually, that project sets the stage to get us up to Anderson, Blumenton, and up to Aggieville. Try to intercept a lot of that water that ends up going down Blumenton. Try to intercept it, get it south, get it out of the whole levy area. 2021, we have K cement road, 2.2 million. The goal of that is to enclose that open ditch. Obviously, at that time, we would also apply for a K dot TA grant to try to put a trail above that enclosed open ditch. 2021 just happens to be when the next TA grants are coming out too. So what a coincidence. Carney Street, Third Street Outfall, 2022, 5.2 million. That's the Carney Interceptor. So that's a large interceptor system that will actually connect to the TCB North Channel Project, run up Carney Street, eventually get up to North Manhattan to intercept some of that Campus Creek water that overflows now, comes down to Blumenton. Going to try to intercept that water, get it out of the Blumenton area. And then 14th Street Interceptor, that's the next phase of the South Manhattan project. Picks up stormwater from Points between Points and Anderson, along 14th Street, again, trying to intercept water, keep it out of the downtown area, get it down to Wildcat Creek, get it out to the Big Blue before it gets to the Pretty Ditch, which is undersized. So what are our options as we look out?
When you said for two of those, you said not include it in Table One. What does that mean?
That's correct. Because our payments wouldn't hit till 2031, 2032. So it, we do have them in the spreadsheet. They are in future years. Next year, when we come back and this is out to 2031, you're going to start seeing those hit that fund. It's just our payments wouldn't start until 2031.
Okay.
So what are our options for 2027? After 2022, in the cost of services study, we assumed a 3% growth. Obviously, one of the options is to increase that to 4 or 5% growth. As we get closer to 2022, we're going to start running those models and see what those numbers need to be. And whether that's a 4% over five years or a 5% one year and back to 3%, those are all options. We're going to run through that model and see what they show. We could also do another sixth year of flattening. Instead of just five years, we could do a sixth year in 2023. There's another option. One of the things that we're seeing a lot of cities do is they add a flat surcharge to your bill. So everybody, all 41,000 equivalent units, add a buck 50 to it. And that's very similar to the water and wastewater with that minimum charge. Some cities are going to that so that everybody pays something. The other option that we're seeing a lot of cities do is implement a development fee or a connection fee, much like the water. When you get a half inch or a three-quarter inch or a one-inch tap and you tap that water main, you pay a fee upfront. That's not part of your monthly bill. I believe Lenexa was the big one doing that, and I think their development fee was north of $1,000 to make a connection when you get your building permit for your new house. So that's another option too. Again, those are the four options you can look at. There's other things you could look at also. This fund stays positive till 2027, so I don't know that, you know, we need to make any big changes in 2020. But those are certainly things we can look at. And with that, can I answer some questions?
I don't have, my only question, you already answered, so I'll just give my general feedback. I actually, personally, regardless of the fund balance, I actually think this is something that we should be pushing a little bit more aggressively. The, the constant thing that I hear from people, other than just general questions about city budgets, what we're doing in terms of stormwater management, budget is always the issue. I never really get negative feedback from people on, like, if there is a way to raise the money, then raise the money. And to me, this seems like an obvious choice to do that. So the, the other factor is, is we live in a brave new world, a different world than we did 10 or 20 years ago. Rain events are more aggressive than they were. And they're going to continually get more aggressive. And so every time we have these major, major rain events and it, you know, affects neighborhoods adjacent to Wildcat Creek or Norview, any of those neighborhoods, the, the budget impact might be a little bit harder to estimate, but it obviously has a general fund impact somewhere. And sometimes those are a little bit harder to communicate, but yeah, I'd, I'd rather us move a little bit more aggressively in this fund Uh, and sometimes those are a little bit harder to communicate, but yeah, I'd, I'd rather us move a little bit more aggressively in this fund and start to be more aggressive at, uh, prevention measures that we could do. So I would be in favor of seeing something more than 3% increase this time around. Um, I don't know exactly what that is, whether that's a, a surcharge or a higher percentage, whatever I, city staff's recommendation is in terms of equitability. Um, but I think that we should be doing more here. This, this is the biggest concern that our citizens have, or at least from my perspective that citizens have, is what we're doing with stormwater. So.
And just as a point of perspective, that 582 in residential, uh, for your monthly bill, average residential monthly bill is about $70. So your stormwater fees, 6, 7% of that average, it's a very small number. So even if you doubled it and you went from 582 to 1082, you're still only going to impact about 3%, 4% of people's budgets. It's, it's a very small piece of the whole component.
I am, am supportive of, in some way, raising the stormwater fee. Um, we tend to dedicate it only to a concrete project, you can touch. And we need to be more proactive. Um, so when it comes to developing signs to delineate a floodplain zone, we need to be able to pay for those signs with stormwater money. It seems, I mean, there's, there's a direct relationship to the consequences for stormwater. And I think people get that. It's, it's not abstract. There's a very direct line to the flooding that we experience here in our community. So anyway, just to add my two cents to that.
And not in this?
If it's a new study, if it's raising the FEMA floodplain, um,
Regulations.
Line, or I don't know what, uh, exactly what it would be, but it, it seems to me that we have to be thinking further ahead. And, and maybe that's how we get there.
Sure. And last year, and I didn't have it in the slide this year, but last year, we did have a slide that has the designation of, you know, hard concrete, storm sewer pipe, and then also detention. And we've spent, you know, north of $3 to $4 million on detention in the last four or five years. Uh, if you recall, we did another, we actually made the Riley County Health Department pond bigger this year, detained about another 100,000 cubic feet of water in there. So pretty large increase there as far as volume, um, CECO. I don't think that there's a trib that goes into Wildcat Creek that we haven't put a detention pond on. I think we've hit every single trib that we have.
Little Kitten, Virginia, Nevada.
Browning.
Browning, Virginia, Nevada.
With the neighborhood there, south of the health department, that those people are not having their cars flooded. And that was one of the early projects we had.
To come to Plavera.
Yeah, exactly. So.
Yeah, we've gone from knee deep water to ankle deep.
We've made a difference and we need to keep making a difference. So.
Yeah. As Brian mentioned before, there's 67 million identified in the downtown east watershed. There's certainly projects in Northview that have been identified. There's projects in, uh, the east side drainage study, which is the McCall Road area. We've done some there. Uh, in Northview, you know, we've done, uh, Casement Bridge. We removed those, all those reinforced concrete boxes that were undersized, so it actually dropped the water surface along, uh, Marlet Channel.
Yeah. Yeah, did the Marlet Channel, lowered the water surface there about two feet, 500,000 cubic yards to fill out of there.
Well, we did, Commissioner, actually, uh, if you remember, we did dredge out Marlet Channel a number of years ago. And that was a green project that wasn't all concrete, uh, put curves in the flow.
Bottom on that, put some willows in.
Anyway, I just, uh,
No, I appreciate it.
We, we have to be deliberate. So that's what I would say.
Yeah, I like the four options you have there. I think we do need to get some more money in there to take care of the, you know, flooding things. And with the, you know, I've looked at, you know, Rob's 67 million dollars worth of projects. And of course, uh, that, that'd make a big difference, but we have to have a way of, a way of funding those. So, you know, I would start off, I think that developmental connection fee would be the first one that I would do, simply because as we build more stuff, it causes more problems with the flooding. So we may as well address that. And then a combination of the other three to, to gradually, uh, increase the amount of money there, with the objective of having some more to fund some of these CIP projects.
Yeah, they're important projects.
Yeah, I think, um, we definitely see a need for this in the community. I wanted to know, uh, when we look at how the future projects that we're projecting on building here, as far as, uh, Aggieville, seeing with the parking garage and other types of businesses coming in and the north campus corridor, uh, how do we collect all of that? I mean, the, are there any exemptions, first of all, is what I want to know? Is there any exemptions in the community that somebody gets an exemption from any of these fees?
No, if you've got a water meter, you're getting a bill.
Okay. Because in some areas, we, we didn't used to collect water, I think, for, for a little while for fees anyway, but I'm glad we do that now. Um.
Well, in the stormwater though, Brian, you know, if the requirement is that you don't shed any more water than prior to the development.
Correct. Yep. And that's our new requirement as far as adding new. Whatever you add new is accounted for through detention on that subdivision. So they aren't going to make it worse. However, I would say that doesn't mean that the downstream system is working well.
It's kind of a built-in development.
Right. Yeah. So I think, I, you know, we definitely have some concerns here. One of the ideas I did like about Wichita and Overland Park is that they have a dedicated mill levy, uh, in one form or another. One has two mills and one has 1.941.
1.961, almost a mill.
So I think that's something we also need to look at, because this is something that's, um, like we already mentioned, it's consistently there. I think some of these, uh, options you gave, I think any one of those I'm comfortable with pursuing, but I don't think we should rule out a, a dedicated mill levy. I mean, we talked, talked about that with social services and other areas, but this is one of those things that's going to continually impact us. Um, and the, and if our property evaluations keep going up, maybe that's one area where it'll keep going up as well. To take care of it. So we don't have to increase anybody else's, um, bills in any other form, because it's automatically going to do so. So I think that's, I don't know what that would look like, but that's something I would like to consider in future conversations with this.
All right. So the plan, just to kind of go back over this, you're going to do the, the study, the distribution of overhead onto the individual departments and the funds. And then what's kind of the timing that we're going to work on for the water, wastewater, and stormwater? Is this, uh, when you said later in the year? Is that, are we talking October, November, or what, what do you think?
I'm trying to remember.
We typically bring those back in November, December, early timeframe, depending on implementation dates. So we get fair notice out to folks for, that their bills are going to go up.
That their bills go up in January, right?
Yeah, typically.
So is there any way that we can give more notice on that? Because I mean, by December, if I'm a business, my, my budget's done in December, right? Like, could we send out notices sooner and say, we anticipate this? Still, City Commissioner, but we anticipate something like this?
Yeah, we can bring in October.
It just, for business, I mean, that's a little.
Get it out of quarter at least in advance.
Yeah, just thought.
Now, on the, on the other one, is the consensus that we set the point four and then we ask the city to show us what it'll look like at zero? Is that what folks are saying?
I, I, I would just, you know, be a little bit more draconian and just tell the city manager to fix it, get it down to zero. I mean, that, that's where I'm at, just, you know, because I think Ron can do it. He did real well when we had the budget crunch last year, managed to shave stuff off. And then if you just take that and spread it across all the departments and, and get rid of cell phone use, travel, and stuff like that, uh, we can get that down to zero.
I think it's okay to see it at zero. I think, um, with, with where we're at right now, I'm almost at a comfortable spot, because I think a lot has been cut. And last year, we felt the, we felt the impact. And we're not in a position to keep, uh, cutting and cutting. He can definitely cut. I don't think there's a problem, uh, in, in Ron cutting the budget further and further. Uh, but the impact, um, you can't ever make up what you lost. It'll always be a catch-up game. And we're not in a position to play catch-up anymore. We have to, we have to run and make some of these things happen. And personnel is, is the key, key player in this whole equation. So.
What, what is, uh, kind of on the administrative timing here?
So the.
Eighth, we're obligated to.
So we need to publish this weekend, and that'll be for the public hearing on the sixth of August at your first meeting. Uh, again, that, that if we were to publish with that point four increase, that sets a ceiling. And then that's the really reason the public hearing is to debate as to whether you should lower that further. Uh, and certainly we can provide additional scenarios for you to, how to do that.
Does that meet everybody's requirements? I know.
I, I am comfortable with the point four mill. I think there has to be some slight growth. I can't imagine, uh, the, uh, even the inflation rate, it, even though it's low, is not zero. And so, um.
Let's just make the request then that we go in at point four and then we ask during the hearing for the city to present a zero. Is that?
Yes, I just want to make it really clear, because we've made that request now four times, that I, again, I don't understand what zero looks like or what impact that has. And so if that doesn't come back to us, no, because I have a lack of information. So just because I just want to make that abundantly clear, because we've said it at least four times now.
Okay. Is that what you needed, Bernie?
Got everything. I think the only thing that I would add is we'll probably go ahead and have one more amended budget, the street maintenance fund. And, uh, that's just because we have that bid opening on the sixth.
You have to do the amendment.
Just to make sure that we have enough budget in case that comes in favorably, uh, I think we'll amend that too. That'd be the only one.
I would still like to talk about the fees that we charge.
And I need a, I need a magnifying glass.
I know.
Well, what I'd like to do, Dennis, uh, is just bring up the memo that we sent out in the mail folder last night and just talk about broad categories. And then if, if you would desire for us to look deeper in those categories, that would be something that, uh, we would prefer to do. Again, uh, we wouldn't necessarily have to do this for the public hearing. We generally follow some of those fees after that. But getting some direction for, there's certainly fees that, uh, haven't been adjusted for a long time. And so.
Yeah, I can't tell from the information when the fee was last raised. And those were the ones I was after, those that, uh, are oldest, so that you don't come sometime and say, that fee hasn't been raised for 15 years. Because I, I, I want to be attentive to those, that kind of a fee.
And we can provide that. I don't know that we have that tonight.
There's one. City administration, um, colored parking zones, annual parking permits have not changed in 20 years. That's the kind I'm after.
And there are a lot of those if you look at the different departments. As the department heads were looking through the different revenues, there are some from 2000, 2003. Some have been recently updated. If you look at 2015, 2017, where some of the departments have put the fee program on a two-year schedule. And so we've seen across the board, as we've looked at revenues, is that we do have a variety. A lot of them have been updated recently. But some of them from even code fees, um, have not been addressed for a while. There's some considering on there we have not charged. If you look at fire, we've not charged some burn fees and increased burn fees. So it's just been a variety of things, particularly community development. When you look at our development fees from 1997, that have not been, um, raised as well. So yeah, there are a lot that have been identified. But again, as we really identified 75 to 79,000 general fund, again, all that depends upon the users of those services or how many code things that we're looking at, or cemetery fees, of course. So a lot of the revenues depended upon the usage or the number of people applying for those services.
What, what's the total that we pull from fees? Does anybody have that on the top of their head?
All 180 some revenues and charges and fees?
Where'd Bernie go? Is that in the, uh, like, budget number one? Did we have that in, uh, revenue for fees was, as a total?
I, I, again, I, I'm not sure. The question, Mayor, again.
The, the total for fees that the city collects.
Not including the other, just other fee revenue.
Oh, it'd have to be off the top of my head, but, uh, it's small. Because, you know, if you recall, transfers, franchise fees, beginning cash, and property taxes, those are your main sources. So that's 80% of your, of your fund, of your general fund. So what's left is small. And, and, you know, if you look at, if you look at the memo, while I'm not going to make light of it, um, we're talking about 75,000 probably, maybe up to 100, depending on if we could raise some other fees a year.
But that's the, that's the delta. That's the change. I was just trying to get some kind of, if you're raising 75,000, is that 10% or what is that?
Of the general fund? Of the total? Of the total fees? No. Maybe it, it might be. I, I can get that number for you, Mayor, tomorrow.
Yeah, I was just trying to put it in context so I could kind of see the impact to the users. It, it was in book number one. I just don't remember what it was.
I thought it was 100,000 is what, somewhere.
Is what, well, that's what we could raise by raising these.
Yeah.
Fees here. Yes.
Yes, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with, you know, what was recommended here. I mean, that, that's about $78,000. And, and, and some of these make, uh, make a lot of sense, especially like, you know, inspecting the tents. I guess those big firework tents and things of that nature. Uh, those make sense to me. And, you know, 78,000, you know, we, we were talking about pushing the, if we push the mill levy down to zero, we need to get 238,000 out of there. So this would make a dent in it. I can see that. Now, there's a couple here you, you didn't highlight that, that I've been talking about, you know, over the past few years. I, I've always thought we should raise our parking fines, you know, under municipal court, and they should be the same as K-State's. K-State has a huge parking fine, and we subsidize, you know, people parking illegally in the city area because they pay less. And I've always thought we should, we should do something about that for one. And then maybe we need to do something about enforcement, and I'll, I'll get back around the pet licensing. You know, because again, I, I see that as way over six figures. If we could figure out how to enforce it, and we've done a, a little bit working with the vets. But we need to crank that up. And, you know, one of your positions here was to hire somebody else for the, uh, animal shelter, which I think they need. But again, that could easily be funded by higher enforcement of, uh, you know, the pet licensing requirement. Although I don't want to go so far as some cities, they, they sent the animal control door to door. I read a story about that. That probably wouldn't be a good idea. But we need to figure out a way to, to raise those revenues.
On the fees provided in the memo, I'm generally fine with those. The only two that I just, maybe a little bit of caution on the, um, the legal municipal court, not the public records request, but any charges for like ordinances. I don't want to raise fines for the sake of generating revenue. Um, I don't think that that doesn't mean that we shouldn't look at them. I just think that we should have that conversation in a different context, just because there were fines earlier this year that I had proposed that we should, in my opinion, lower. Um, so I, I just, I think that we should have that conversation in a different context than a budget. Because the only way I'd really support that is if it was an actual deterrent, um, and, and that was an issue. The other, only other one was Parks and Rec. Um, obviously, we need to recoup costs. Um, so that's important that we reevaluate those fees, but I just think it's important that we, um, and I'm sure you're doing a lot of this already, Eddie, but make sure scholarship programs, payment plans are available to low-income people, um, because we still want to make sure that the community can participate in those programs. But otherwise, everything on this list, um, seems totally reasonable.
The biggest chunk of that, obviously, is Parks and Rec. So.
And we've talked a little bit, you know, I, I know it wasn't part of this, but you've got some new gyms coming on board and stuff like that. And there's been some discussion on, you know, should you have, you know, users' fees to use those? Some cities do that. I know we, we haven't. We just had it, you know, open admission, but some cities have, have got little passes to use the facilities. Uh, that could be considered at a low rate. And then some cities charge, uh, uh, non-residents a different fee. And maybe we should look at that. I, I also think that, you know, with the new gyms coming on board here in a couple of years, it would be interesting to, to come up with, with maybe a, some kind of a pass. Like right now, we've got pool passes that cover pools, but, but a pass that would say, okay, this is good for everything. The zoo, the Discovery Center, Parks and Rec, the swimming, whatever. And I, I don't know exactly what the fee would be on that, but that, you know, because right now I've got a Discovery card and I've got a zoo card and I can get a pool pass. And if there's some way we could combine all those, uh, I think that might be lucrative. And if there's some way we could combine all those, I think that might be lucrative.
It'll bring a few, a few dollars in, I don't know about lucrative. Yeah, I think I'm comfortable with most of the fee changes, except for the municipal court. I think we need to be cautious with that and work with the judges. And look at the types of people that are not paying, because my, my understanding is, like I was, when I was talking to Director Butler, that it's the same population that can't pay in the first place, we just keep increasing it, because they're never gonna pay. And they're the ones that are stuck. So, I, the ones that can pay, they can usually afford three or four lawyers, or however many they need. And we're giving this because they can't afford somebody. And so, I just want us to be cautious in that area before we start increasing. And when we do look at, you know, when we did the pools, the revenue source was, we were gonna collect this much money from membership. That was a big disaster. Then we had to come back and lower it, and then we had the twilight hour and all of this, where it came down to a dollar or two dollars, and more people use it. So, some of the, when we look at fees for the rec center and all of that, we also have to think of it as a preventive measure. If we make it too high, the people that need it the most will not be able to utilize it because they have four, three or four children, and they can't pay five bucks a head for each kid, or something of that sort. So, let's just be, see who is paying what and how much we need to increase it. Again, this is just a small dent, so it's worth taking a look at. But if we haven't done some of the increases in decades, let's look at those more than, let's see, as a revenue source. We have fifty-four thousand people in our community, and we need to make sure they're healthy and can use the facilities they're already paying for with their sales tax and property taxes.
I'd like to be sure that we don't make the open records requests a formidable cost. I want that transparency for our community, for our city. So, that one was one I was, I have to talk to somebody about, about the two-thousand-dollar piece.
Relative to that, most cities have actually adopted a fee schedule. The state has a fee schedule, so I mean, I mean, we don't. Right now, it's very, we spend a lot of time on some record requests that never even get picked up. So, requiring a down payment.
Okay.
For, for work would be, I think, a start to some of that. So, I think it's, I think it's, I don't disagree. I think we're very transparent as it is. But again, I think providing something that's reasonable and also a schedule, so people know what that, that might be.
I just don't want, don't wanna make it prohibitive.
There are other ways of making that available without producing copies of the record.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, or disc or something. Anyway, I just don't wanna make it prohibitive, that transparency. Much, I mean, we have a good reputation around in other cities about being very transparent, and it's because we put everything on the web practically. And our, and our meetings are televised, and we do a good job of that. But I wanna be sure we don't limit what folks can get from us, too.
One of the things that we may wanna look at, I don't, I don't know how difficult this is, but, you know, in today's time, with debit cards and with the ability to swipe a phone across a scanner to check in and things like that, we might be able to do that in some of our city services. I mean, we do it in airports, for crying out loud, we oughta be able to do it at the pool. Yeah. That allows you to do some other tailoring based on other factors, too, so. All right. You have everything you need?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.